I call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's September 2nd, 2025 Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle? Counselor Graham?
Here.
Counselor Dowd?
Here.
Counselor Dolman?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Fisher, can you raise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your agenda in front of us. Look to council for approval. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move the agenda as published.
Second?
Second? All right. Motion is second. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Two items on the consent agenda this evening. First item are the council minutes from the August 11, 2025 meeting. And the second item is postponed bid award for 2025 lead service line replacements project. This item considers postponing award of this bid until September 15, 2025. Any public comment on the, either of the two items on the consent agenda? Motion? Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Second. Mr. Fisher, all in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. No committee report this evening, so at this point in time, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Please step forward, state your name, and give your comments to the council. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on to the first action item this evening, which is Resolution 6289 Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex renaming. This item considers renaming the Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex to the Dan Johns Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex. Mr. Nygren, a presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is a topic that's been discussed for a number of years. There was a work session on it a couple of weeks ago. There has been a request from the Kids Sports Board and/or Kids Sports Representatives to consider renaming the Kids Sports Youth Athletic Complex to the Dan Johns Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex, just in regards to how much efforts he had put into it and the development to that facility. So the resolution before you would cement that in stones and rename the facility, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, if you would entertain going back an agenda item, we did have a gentleman out here that wanted to give general public comment.
Let's finish this one up, and then we'll go back and I'll open that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions for staff? Any public comment on Resolution 6289?
I'd like to start by thanking the council for getting this resolution to add Dan Johns' name this far along. I just got a message from his son. Dan is not in very good health. They are watching this proceeding, and hopefully he will be listening to it. I would encourage you to pass this resolution one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman.
I forgot to state my name. Roy Beekman, 241 Commons Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on 6289? To council for a motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move, we adopt Resolution Number 6289, a resolution recognizing the contribution of Dan Johns to the City of Kalispell Youth and designating the Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex as the Dan Johns Kalispell Youth Athletic Complex. Second?
Second? Mr. We'll give that. Ms. Carlson? Discussion on the motion? Anything? Okay, we'll all say it. So, Mr. Beekman, appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Mr. Johns gave his heart and soul to the youth athletic complex. And I think it's utterly, you know, completely appropriate to name this, so we don't lose touch with a person who had a great impact on our community, and we don't rename it to something else in the future, forgetting our history. So I look forward to voting the affirmative on this, especially for a man as fine as Dan Johns. And with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. So, we're gonna... Yep, thank you, Mr. Beekman. We're gonna reverse back. Mr. Dowd, do you notice? So, stem on the public comment, please step up, give us the comment.
Quick question, is this about the...
Up, up at the microphone, sir.
So just to clarify, because this is my first time here, so please forgive me, but is this in regards to any items on the agenda or any items not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda altogether, or just the two items of business that were currently announced?
No.
At the beginning?
Anything on the agenda that is here, there's public comment on.
Okay, well, I'm already here, so it's on the agenda, but if you'll allow me, I'll go ahead and just speak my piece and be out of your hair.
Otherwise, what I end up with then is everybody. I'd prefer to keep the comment on the agenda item, because then it's relevant to the conversation at hand.
Yep, no problem.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, second item, ordinance 1941. This is the first reading Silverbrook Village Plan Unit Development Amendment. This item considers amending an amendment to this 11.7 acre PUD at 441 and 465 Diamond Peak Drive to allow for increased density of 198 residential units. Mr. Nygren, a presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll turn it over to PJ Sorenson, our Assistant Director of Development Services, for a staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council. Montreiz Developments LLC has submitted applications for Silverbrook Village, which is an amendment to the Silverbrook Plan Unit Development. The property is located at 441 and 465 Diamond Peak Drive and contains 11.7 acres. It's currently zoned B1, which is neighborhood business, with an existing PUD overlay. This proposal would maintain that underlying zoning designation. The proposal calls for 198 residential units, intended to be developed as condominiums with a variety of housing types ranging from two-unit buildings to larger multi-unit buildings. The proposal also has 20,400 square feet of neighborhood business uses that are included within the mixed-use buildings. The amendment's necessary due to an increase in density from the original approval for the PUD as a whole. The PUD is served by multiple connections to Church Drive and Highway 93 North. The Church Drive-Highway 93 intersection consists of a junior interchange. That, the areas that is subject to this PUD amendment fronts on several city streets, which include East Monture Ridge, Great Northern Trail, East Swift Creek Way, and Diamond Peak Drive. Would note that the entirety of this property is actually within the Whitefish School District rather than School District 5. This is just a shot of the property, looking from the northwestern corner off to the southeast. As I mentioned, the existing zoning is B1 with that PUD overlay. The Kalispell Growth Policy Feature Land Map designates the subject property as part of a neighborhood commercial high-density residential node, along with some suburban residential. The designation supports the existing B1 zone on the property. And the existing underlying zoning with the PUD overlay, as well as the existing proposed development, is substantially consistent with the growth policy designation. The growth policy provides for densities up to 20 or 40 units per acre in high-density residential areas, and no specific maximum in neighborhood commercial areas. This proposal would provide for about 16.9 acres, or 16.9 units per acre on an overall basis. The growth policy, Chapter 4A on housing, encourages a variety of residential development that provides housing for all sectors and income levels within the community. City services, including sewer, water, and streets, are in the vicinity and available to the subject property. 694 units are currently allowed in the overall Silverbrook Development under the current approvals. Existing phases, plus areas with preliminary plats, plus the apartments, with total 638, or just 56 units left for these lots, as well as the remainder of the northern area that has not been preliminarily platted, which is shown as Phase 2C Creekside North Single Family Area on the plan. This proposal would increase the number of units beyond the existing approvals up to a total of 836 units. The maximum commercial square footage within the PUD is 120,000 square foot footprint, and this proposal would still be well under that total, which is currently about 63,524 square feet, including this development. The overall layout of the development fits within the PEDs, a transition between the commercial area to the north and the apartment use to the south. It utilizes an existing landscape corridors buffering from the highway, and the arrangement of buildings is intended to provide a transition from the single-family homes to the west by placing smaller two-unit buildings, which should have the appearance of townhouses on the western perimeter of the site, with the larger buildings closer to the highway. The design incorporates sidewalks on-site and connections to the bike path within the highway landscape buffer. It's anticipated that the development will tie into the existing stormwater facilities in the public right-of-way. Those facilities connect to a private storm pond, which you can see in the middle of the plan there. As part of the design review, Public Works will review the drainage of the site to ensure that the existing pond has sufficient capacity for storage and treatment. Fire Station 62 is located about three and a half miles away from this phase, providing adequate response time. It should be noted that an additional fire station is planned for construction just to the west of the property in the northwest corner of the Silverbrook PUD. The lot for the station will be platted and transferred to the city with Phase 1 of the Riverside North. Under city regulations, the proposal is considered to be a multifamily mixed-use project. While there's an ownership interest as condominiums, open space and recreational amenities are reviewed under the multifamily standard, which requires 500 square feet of land or the equivalent in amenities to provide a recreational component. The 198 units would require 2.27 acres of the equivalent. The proposed layout includes two specified park areas totaling 0.85 acres, along with the clubhouse and other site improvements, which will likely exceed the minimum requirements. The use of multiple buildings also allows for areas of green space throughout the site. And just kind of stepping through the housing types, you can see on the west side, you know, the yellow ones are the two-unit townhomes. The blue is a kind of a different layout. It's still two-unit townhomes. As you're moving then to the center area, the pink, those are the mixed-use buildings. They would have the commercial use on the main floor, and then be fronting, kind of like a Main Street appearance, with the apartment units or condo units in the second and third floors. As you're moving further to the east, you can see the purple and the orange are kind of rowhouse layouts, which would be somewhat similar to a townhome layout, with the larger buildings than in red, off to the east. Going through the center, that Central Road is an existing city street. They're proposing diagonal parking within that area. There's no additional deviations from zoning or subdivision regulations from the existing approvals. It's simply adding the additional units from the original proposal. In terms of water and sewer, those services are available to the development we provided by the City of Kalispell. The applicant would extend existing mains from within the adjacent rights-of-way. The system for the development will be reviewed and approved by the Kalispell Public Works Department in accordance with the standards for design and construction. The onsite water mains will be publicly owned and maintained. As such, utility easements for the mains and related appurtenances will need to be granted to the city. The onsite sewer mains will be privately owned and maintained. There's adequate capacity within the city's systems to accommodate this project. In regard to access and roads, since the lots are already developed and served by existing streets, no extensions are required. However, any improvements, such as streetlights or boulevard trees that are necessary to bring the frontages to city standards, should be required. Onsite traffic circulation is reviewed as part of the multifamily parking lot development and not as separate private streets. The dimensions and layout on the onsite design would be reviewed as part of the building and site review permit process to ensure compliance with city standards, and should incorporate pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. Access to the streets should be limited to common approaches, as shown on the submitted site plan, with no individual accesses from a specific unit or building being allowed. Although East Swift Creek Way, which is the north-south road separating the two lots, is an existing public street, the proposal does call for angled parking, as I mentioned, within the right-of-way. Angled parking is not prohibited under city standards, although not typically part of a street design. As such, it would be appropriate to include conditions to better incorporate angled parking into the existing street. Conditions should include a long-term maintenance agreement for striping and posting signage for no overnight parking. A traffic impact study is required for the development. Under city standards, the developer shall maintain or improve the level of service at any impacted intersections. A condition of approval should require any mitigation to be implemented that would be necessary to meet that standard. The applicant did submit a TIS that was prepared by WGM Group in June of '25. The TIS recommended an eastbound right-turn lane be constructed at the intersection of West 93 Southbound ramps and Church Drive, based on MDT's criteria for right-turn lanes. Approval from MDT would be necessary for the construction of the improvement. There you go. This is showing the phasing. You can see Phase 1 is the western portion of that development. Phase 2 would jump over to the eastern side, with Phases 3, 4, and 5 basically filling in between the two of them. With that, the Councilful Planning Commission adopted Staff Report KPUD 2503 as findings of fact and forwarded a recommendation to the Kalispell City Council that Silverbrook Village as an amendment to the Silverbrook PUD be approved, subject to 21 listed conditions, and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Any public comment on ordinance 1941?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. You guys know me. For the community, my name is Kyle Voitlander, candidate for Ward 3 of Kalispell, representing the west and east side districts of downtown. And I didn't even know this was on the docket, actually, tonight. I was planning to come speak on a different portion, as some community members had asked me to speak on, but I'm seeing this issue time and time again with our city planners over here, that shoving more housing in, more housing in areas that can't handle it. Silverbrook was started well before the recession in 2008. As we know, I've spoken on it before. And homes were left standing uncompleted. Now they're being completed. I think we're on to the third phase, from what I've dug into. I would recommend highly voting against this annexation, or excuse me, changing of zoning to allow dense population in that area. We already have apartment buildings being built in a neighborhood that was originally supposed to be somewhat of higher-end homes, nicer homes, for people who probably are looking to retire or even raise a family. And those homes even, that entire subdivision was not built correctly at all. And that's, that's not just my opinion, that's clearly fact. I've stated it multiple times, I've seen it. I used to do the snow plowing for the subdivision of the actual Silverbrook Estates. The floodplain is completely wrong. I don't know what engineer said it was correct, but it constantly floods. There's nowhere to put snow. Now you're gonna add a condo subdivision, which I think is, can be even worse than an apartment building with a parking lot. Obviously, this is preliminary planning, but where are you gonna put the snow in this? How are fire engines gonna get in there? How's a ladder truck gonna get in there? We have a 300-foot ladder truck in the city, and you'd be amazed to get it in there, but it might take an extra 10 minutes to set up that truck for a fire. So, that being said, and Ryan Hunter spoke on it last week, that we want to build within and not build out, and this is already in our city, but how do we build correctly? And that hasn't been done over the last 10, 15 years, and especially over the last five. So, I'd highly recommend voting against it. Not saying don't develop it. Obviously, it's in the city, it's gonna get developed, but let's make a smart decision about this. We go back to the wetland, or the pond photo, and Silverbrook draining into that pond. I've watched it. I've watched all four seasons, because I've worked in that neighborhood in all four seasons. And I can tell you that majority of that neighborhood does not properly drain to that pond. It floods out on their bike path, out between the, the home, the homes on the highway side to Highway 93, constantly are flooding, mainly snow melt, which is a big issue. But this just, this looks like problems to me. And we can get into the, the road department as well, and them having to clear, clear more roads in there. There's roads already built that they're already clearing. Leave it at that. Don't high-density population the city. That's not what the city was built on. That's not what our Montana values are, so. I'll speak again here on the upcoming agenda items, but I wanted to touch base on this, because obviously, we haven't got the hint that this high-density housing isn't working for Kalispell, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mike Brody, WGM Group, 431 First Avenue West, the consultant on this project. I guess, I know PJ already outlined this, but I felt it was worth clarifying. There, there's no zone change being proposed here. And it was originally proposed and approved as commercial lots. These are final-platted lots. And we did run stormwater analysis on this, and it's actually a less impervious area than was previously planned with the commercial development that we were proposing here originally. I do think it's a really great thing to be able to provide ownership options in regards to condos. We don't see a lot of those coming through anymore. And I think this is a really great place to do it, with the mixed-use transition from the apartments to the commercial uses up to the north. There was a comment about access not being available. We did look at this with the traffic impact study, and we'd previously looked at it with the commercial lots. And I'm not gonna remember the exact numbers, but they're pretty close. The residential, what we're proposing here versus the commercial that was planned, we're talking about a difference in like 20 trips in the morning and 18 in the evening. So this is very comparable, as far as what was gonna be impacting the city facilities. But if there are any other questions relating to this, I'm happy to answer, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, Nicole Schubert. I live in some apartments over by Costco in Kalispell City. And I just saw this in the newspaper, so I thought I'd find out what it was about. My one request to you all when you make this choice is to think about, like, I know a few years ago, we didn't have enough low-income housing, and this is a little bit higher than low-income housing. But it seems like the market is getting saturated with units. Like, I live over by the park with the field, the baseball field, and there are two-unit condos. And they've been building them for a while, and now there's signs, like, move in, you know, trying to get people to move in. So clearly, they're not selling them, whereas a few years ago, there was a very high demand for product on the market. So, it seems to have changed. I've seen move-in specials at apartment buildings, and that only happens when the owners aren't renting enough. So, I hope you guys will consider that. Oh, and the other one was that I heard that this is then gonna be, sorry, my voice, I'm nervous when I speak in public. That it's, the kids will go to the Whitefish School District. So, if that's true, then I hope you guys will consider conversing with them, because it will affect Whitefish then, and the costs there for their school. And also, the other thing was having a new fire department or building there. That would also be costly, and where's that money gonna come from? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And I'm just gonna take a second and remind everybody, when we hear public comment, somebody gives public comment, if you clap, I will have you removed. If you make comments, if you cheer, I will have you removed. Because here's the situation. You may agree with the person that's up there. The next person who's coming up to speak may be wanting to say something completely different. I want to hear from that person, too, and I don't want somebody else potentially intimidating or influencing somebody else from not making comment, because, well, I don't want to lose business, or I don't want to have something happen, so. Appreciate just everybody holding their peace while people make their comments to the council. This is our time to get information from the public, so.
Yeah, Joseph Bybee, 1005 First Avenue East, just eight blocks south of here. So this is not on the agenda tonight. I apologize. It's a deviation. But about a year ago, this council heard comment from the community regarding the Friday night event, formerly called Cruz Kalispell, but whatever it's called now, it is an event. And it is, for those of us in our neighborhoods and, and Main Street businesses, because I ask people, a force to be reckoned with. Extremely noisy, reckless drivers.
Sir, can I, I gotta stop you. We're on an agenda item right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're on.
Oh, my.
Ordinance, so.
I apologize. Okay. So will there be a moment for...
That was at the start of the meeting.
Okay. I'm late. Thank you.
But stick around, we'll be here after. Any other public comment on ordinance 1941? Seeing none, look to council for a motion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move approval of ordinance Number 1941, and ordinance authorizing and adopting an amendment to the Silverbrook Estates Plan Unit Development enacted by ordinance, enacted by ordinance Number 1597, and amended by ordinance Numbers 1785, 1813, and 1915.
Second?
Second? Discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead. You speak to your motion.
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to, you know, this is part of a PUD. So, this is what PUDs do. You know, they are a little more malleable in the process. And so, yeah, there's no zone change here. And I guess maybe to balance off a public comment on this, this isn't something that staff woke up in the morning and said, hey, let's do this. This has an applicant behind it. The applicant brought it to staff. The staff goes in and looks at what they're wanting to do. And it works its way through the process, through the planning board, up to the city council. So, I've been hearing this a lot about staff going through and, and, and really taking the, the end of the bat when it comes to a lot of development. But all this development has private applicants that are approaching the city with their projects. So, I just wanted to get that out there. I guess real quick, Jared, as far as the school district, for Whitefish School District, it wasn't this one. It was, it was, it was the one off to the, the right, a little bit further north. it was, it was the one off to the, the right and a little bit further north? Or does this one have that too?
No, so the, the school district boundaries are not part of the city.
Right.
Um, there is a process for amending that boundary, the school districts are aware from, aware of it, there's their own maneuvering and things.
And then amended by numbers seventeen eighty-five, eighteen thirteen, and nineteen fifteen. So, there've been amendments in the past to this, that's how PUDs work. So, I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I just had a question for staff on, with regards to public comment. Do, do we have any information about failing drainage in Silverbrook, or, or inadequate drainage happening in Silverbrook?
No, there's no complaints that we've received for that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also note, uh, to expand on that a little bit, that floodplain is different than drainage, so floodplains, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not in a designated flood zone.
Yeah, no, for sure. Um, yeah, you know, I really love the mix of, of housing in this project. Um, and what I'm particularly excited about, I don't think in my time on council, we have seen, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, proposal with commercial on the bottom and housing above. This kind of Main Street idea that they have there on East Swift Creek Way, and it's been something I've been wanting to see for a really long time, and a proposal's coming before us. So I'm really excited about that, and, and eager to see that on the ground, I would like to see a lot more of that in our proposals. So, uh, I'll also be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any other discussion? Motion? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next item. Ordinance nineteen forty-two, this is the first reading, school short-term parking, this item considers allowing short-term parking for schools to be permitted administratively. Mr. Nigron?
Yeah, mayor and council, I had a work session on this last week, the school district did have a request due to some changes in the parking around Peterson to allow for, uh, short-term rental for loading, unloading. Um, staff did talk about some proposed changes that would allow for a permit in those instances for schools K through twelve. I know there was some discussion at council about the school, the school definition, so we did define that as just schools K through twelve, which would encompass private schools, um, in our opinion as well. Um, the ordinance before you also removes the parking restrictions that were put in place in front of hedges, um, given that they also would be able to get a permit for the same process, so staff is here to ask any questions, and that's it.
Any questions for staff? Is there any public comment on ordinance nineteen forty-two? Counsel for a motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, your honor, we, uh, I move, we adopt ordinance number nineteen forty-two, in ordinance amending Kalispell Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen, Article four, stopping standing and parking generally by amending section seventeen dash eighty-two, parking spaces for taxi cabs, buses, and delivery vehicles, and section seventeen dash ninety, overtime parking prohibited, declaring an effective date, and authorizing the city attorney to codify the same.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Discussion? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, your honor, um, I'd just like to point out that, you know, we, we took this in as an action item. Uh, we had a work, work session on it. It was determined that if we were to implement this specifically for this school itself, we'd have to make changes to our code. And, um, this change to the code actually allows for this to happen in the future without, you know, having to come before council every time, it's a streamlining of our process, it, it makes it a little bit of quicker decision. And, um, uh, I appreciate that, uh, we're looking for ways to make government more efficient, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Any other discussion? A roll call vote?
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, Ashley Creek Park Annexation and Zoning, this item considers annexation and initial zoning of P one public of twenty-five point seven acres, and rezoning ten point five five acres to P one public at three oh one Fernway. We have three items this evening, resolution sixty-two ninety is the annexation. Second item would be ordinance nineteen forty-three, which would be the first reading for the zoning. And ordinance nineteen forty-four, which would be the first reading for the zone change at three oh one Fernway. I'm gonna ask for a staff presentation on all three items at the same time, since they're intertwined, public comment at the same time on all three items. And then we'll take each item up successively, uh, to take action on them as council. Presentation?
Yeah, mayor and council, a long time coming, as you're well aware, the city's been working for quite some time to acquire the Y Track property, um, which is adjacent of what would become the Ashley Park, working with the Bibblers. The Bibblers also have some property in the vicinity that hasn't been annexed yet, as well as a piece that's in the city. But, uh, just looking at consolidating all this property and developing a park, and with that, I'll turn it over to Donnie McBath, Planner Two, to give a staff report.
Good evening, City Council, Donnie McBath, Planner Two, welcome everyone. This presentation covers a joint application from Bibler Resources Company and the City of Kalispell to annex the rezoned approximately thirty-six acres of land along Ashley Creek. The proposal is part of a broader initiative to create a contiguous public park and preserve the Ashley Creek Corridor. We'll go over the background, zoning changes, growth policy alignment, and staff's recommendation. This is a two-part request, annexation approximately twenty-six acres in the city. This includes parcels owned by Bibler Resources and parcels already owned by the city, but currently located outside city limits. A zone change for ten point five acres from B one neighborhood business to P one public for land already in city limits. Together, these changes would create a thirty-six acre unified park space. This effort aligns with Kalispell's broader goals in ecological preservation, recreation, and urban connectivity. The subject property is located at three oh one Fernway, it lies between the South Meridian Road and the Highway ninety-three bypass between Appleway Drive and Foyt Lake Road. The site includes the Ashley Creek Corridor and is surrounded by mixed uses, residential, commercial, and formal industrial zones. The park would serve as a green anchor in a rapidly developing part of town. The annexation area is currently zoned, county, I two, and R one. The area subject to the zone change is zone city B one. The property has been vacant for years and once used as a lumber mill. Those industrial buildings have since been removed, and the area now functions as a traditional open space. The proposal transitions the land from outdated industrial use to protected public space aligned with community needs. The proposed zoning for the entire area is P one public. The designation allows for a broad range of public uses, parks, trails, schools, civic facilities, et cetera. P one zoning can be applied across all future use categories. Here it's being used specifically to create permanent public parkland to conserve natural features like Ashley Creek and the associated wetlands. This project strongly supports the Kalispell growth policy. The site lies within the city's annexation boundary and is surrounded on three sides by city zoning. The growth policy encourages infill and redevelopment preservation of natural corridors, expansion of parkland, and smart growth practices. Bringing this land into city limits with a practice, with public zoning designate designation directly aligns with these goals and allows for consistent long-term stewardship. The property is well-served by existing infrastructure, sewer, water, refuse services will be provided by the city upon annexation. Electric services provided by Flathead Electric Cooperative, gas services is through Northwestern Energy. Emergency services including fire and police will transition from county to city jurisdiction. Because the land will remain open space, there are minimal new demands on services. We expect a minimal impact on transportation. A park will generate less traffic than commercial and residential uses. If the eventual development of the park results in more than three hundred vehicle trips per day, a traffic impact study will be required. Importantly, the site presents opportunities for expanding Kalispell's pedestrian and trail networks, potentially linking the parkline trail and rail, trail system. The proposed zoning brings many benefits, preserves the Ashley Creek Repairing Corridor, provides open space and recreational opportunities, enhances neighborhood livability and walkability, protects against incompatible redevelopment, example, industrial or high-density commercial uses, and increases adjacent property values by improving the natural environment and view sheds. Planning Commission recommends adopt the findings of this report and forward a positive recommendation to the City Council, annexation of twenty-five point seven acres and initial P one zoning, rezoning for ten point five acres from B one to P one. This action supports the growth policy, aligns with public interest, and allows for long-term community use for the environmental stewardship. Thank you, council, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Dowd?
The, uh, development of the park area of this is a privately funded operation, is that correct?
Yeah, those details are still being worked out, but at this point, yes, it's be part of the Bibler family, and they're currently going through the process of developing the park, no city funds. Of, obviously, other than a portion of this property, the Y Track property was purchased by the City of Kalispell, which, um, there is a memorandum of understanding with them to incorporate portions of that into the park. So at this point in time, no funds have been expended by the City of Kalispell, but there is a memorandum of understanding in place that would allow for some of this space to be utilized for parkland in the future.
Appreciate that, thanks. Any other questions for staff? Is there any public comment on these three items, resolution sixty-two ninety, ordinance nineteen forty-three, and ordinance nineteen forty-four?
Good evening again, everyone, I think you know me by now, again, Kyle Loylander, candidate for Ward Three. Uh, I wanna say thank you to the council, uh, community members that put this project in motion. I know it's been a long time coming to get this park, um, going, since we no longer have the railroad coming through town. I don't have much against it, actually, I actually think it's a, a great park to have. Um, I think it's gonna improve the west side of town. Um, I do have my, my concerns over, you know, homeless people in the park and that sort of thing, and safety of, of kids and a, along those lines, but we can address that as this park moves forward. My one big question on this, and I wouldn't even say it's against this whole thing, but if it is privately funded now, who's funding it ten years from now? Is the city taking a hundred percent care of it, are our tax dollars going to it? From my understanding, the Parks Department is stretched pretty thin on both personnel and, uh, dollar signs, so. Uh, my question is, is who's, who's maintaining it? And if we don't annex it, and they continue to build the park in the county, what happens in that sense? Do, do we maintain the parkline trail up until the county stops and, and have a partnership with the county? And, and that, um, that money side of things, you know, is a big issue, because we know our, our dollar signs are tight, so. Um, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Other than that, I, I, I'm happy to see the park in motion, I drive by it every day, and they've got a grader, dozers, skid steers, everything moving dirt in there right now, so. I'm hoping that, that the right plan all comes to, to motion, and in a year, we have a beautiful park to enjoy with friends and family, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, um, my name's Jessica Chance. I didn't necessarily come here for this, but I do like the park, I think it's a great idea, I think it'll keep us from having more apartment buildings that nobody wants, yay. I am also concerned about the draw on the city resources. We're putting in a gazillion new units, that's gonna take water, all these people, fire, police. Park is great, it's minimal resource, who pays for that? Because my taxes are way higher than they should be already, and that's a concern for me. The other concern is the new Woodland Park West, the homeless encampments. I bike through there, I, I use that trail constantly, it is really scary. I've usually travel with some sort of self-protection on a road bike. That is my biggest concern, I think the park's great, I think we're headed in the right direction, great use of the land, but those things I think should be addressed, and the cost of the ongoing maintenance of this park, I think it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on resolution sixty-two ninety or ordinances nineteen forty-three and nineteen forty-four? See now, I'll look to council on resolution sixty-two ninety?
I'll read it, I move to, uh, approve resolution sixty-two ninety, a resolution to provide for the alteration of the boundaries of the City of Kalispell by including therein as an annexation certain real property described as assessors tract two, eight, ten, eleven A, seventeen, and eighteen, located in the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of southeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, as more particularly described on exhibit A, tract two of certificate of survey number one nine five four five, situated lying and being in the northeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, and tract two of certificate of survey number one nine five eight two, situated lying and being in the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, as more particularly described on exhibit B to be known as Ashley Creek Park Edition, Park Edition number four eight three, to zone said property in accordance with the Kalispell zoning ordinance and to declare an effective date.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, your honor, I just wanted to follow up with a question on public comment, uh, to staff, that do we, does parks feel like we have adequate capacity to maintain the park, uh, once it comes online?
So I guess the action before you has nothing to do with the park per se, it's annexation initial zoning, which then would facilitate the development of a park. There's still a lot of details to be worked out in regards to that, the MOU is very broad, very encompassing. You know, the idea is that the park would be developed with a potential endowment, those details have not been worked out.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion? I think the only thing to add, I guess, Mr. Hunter, from that is, this is just step one. There's more steps to come regarding the funding of the park, et cetera, as we move forward, so. Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Counsel for a motion on ordinance nineteen forty-three. Ms. Dahlman?
I'll do it again. I move ordinance number nineteen forty-three and ordinance two, and section twenty-seven point zero two point one, zero one zero, official zoning map, City of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number one six seven seven, by zoning certain real property described as assessors tract two, eight, ten, eleven A, seventeen, and eighteen, located in the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of southeast quarter and section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, as more particularly described on exhibit A, tract two of certificate of survey number one nine five four five, situated lying and being in the northeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, and tract two of certificate of survey number one nine five eight two, situated lying and being on the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM, Flathead County, Montana, as more particularly described on exhibit B, previously zoned county R one suburban residential and I two heavy industrial to city P one public in accordance with the Kalispell Growth Policy Plan at twenty thirty-five, and to provide an effective date.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Hunter. We need a discussion on the motion. A roll call vote?
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor, or Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Dolman?
Oh, sorry. Miss? Aye. Sorry. I skipped you, I'm sorry.
Next item will be Ordinance nineteen forty-four.
I'll do it.
You're on a roll.
Mine as well. Sorry. All right. I move Ordinance number one nine four four and ordinance to amend section twenty-seven point zero-two point zero-one-zero official zoning map City of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number one six seven seven by zoning certain real property described as tract three of Certificate of Survey number one nine two three three and tract one of Certificate of Survey number one nine five eight two both situated lying and being in the north half of the northeast quarter of section thirteen Township twenty-eight North Range twenty-two West PMM Flathead County, Montana, containing approximately ten point five five acres subject to any easements, covenants, conditions, restrictions, or agreements of record previously zoned city B one neighborhood business to city P one public in accordance with the Kalispell growth policy plan at twenty thirty-five and to provide an effective date.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Discussion on the motion. Roll call vote?
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is North Meadows multi-family annexation zoning and conditional use permit. This item considers annexation initial zoning of city RA one residential apartment and a conditional use permit for a ninety-nine unit apartment development on twelve point one-three acres at one eight five nine South Meadows Drive. Three items in consideration this evening. The first is Resolution sixty-two ninety-one, which is annexation. Second item is Ordinance nineteen forty-five. This will be the first reading for zoning. And the third item will be the conditional use permit. We will get a staff presentation on all three items at one time, and questions, or questions from staff, and public comment, and then Council will each, address each item successively thereafter. Mr. Nyger?
Yeah, Mayor Council, once again, I'll turn it over to Donnie McMath, Planner Two, for a staff report.
Good evening, City Council, Donnie McMath, Planner Two. Good evening, public. Tonight, we are presenting the annexation and conditional use permit request for the North Meadows multi-family project. This project involves a staff report K A dash twenty-five dash oh four, five, the annexation and initial RA one zoning, and staff report K C U twenty-five dash oh four, the conditional use permit for multifamily housing. The project originally came before the Planning Commission in July, where it was tabled to allow the applicant to address concerns. After receiving supplemental information in August, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of approval with conditions. Tonight, the City Council will consider this request. The initial Planning Commission hearing on July eighth raised several important concerns, specifically regarding traffic volumes on Bluestone Drive and the project's compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. In response, the applicant submitted additional technical information on August first. This included updates to the traffic impact study, a geotechnical investigation. With the supplemental information, the Planning Commission held a follow-up hearing on August twelfth. After reviewing the data and hearing public testimony, the Commission recommended approval for, of annexation, zoning, and CUP, subject to twenty conditions. Traffic analysis, I'm going to let Keith take over and talk about these sections.
Thanks, Donnie. Traffic is often a primary concern with multifamily developments. Because a proposed development is projected to generate over three hundred vehicle trips per day, a full traffic impact study was required and conducted by Avalon Traffic Services in May of twenty twenty-five, and an addendum was provided in July to further address neighborhood concerns. Based on the scope being required for the T I S, the development would be required to evaluate the intersections of South Meadows and Bluestone Drive, and Denver Avenue and Bluestone Drive. Staff requested the T I S also evaluate the intersection of Denver Avenue and Sunnyside Drive, Denver Avenue and Till Drive, Bluestone Drive and Beg Park Drive, and Beg Park Drive and Airport Road. Currently, Bluestone Drive between South Meadows Drive and Beg Park Drive has an average annual daily traffic volume of about a thousand vehicles per day. The North Meadows project is projected to generate a total of six hundred and sixty-seven trips, with seventy percent entering and exiting the site from the east, and thirty percent entering and exiting the site from the west. With this distribution, the project is expected to add roughly five hundred daily trips to Bluestone Drive east of the development, bringing the total volume for Bluestone to about fifteen hundred vehicles per day. This volume is within the acceptable capacity for the roadway. Vehicle speeds were also measured on Bluestone. The average vehicle speed is twenty-six miles an hour, with the eighty-fifth percentile measured at thirty-two miles an hour. Importantly, the congestion issues residents have observed from baseball games at Beg Park were noted, but those events are not directly attributable to this project. The condition of Bluestone Drive was another concern of area residents. Bluestone Drive was overlaid in twenty sixteen, and the annual pavement condition index provided scores between ninety-five and ninety-nine, and therefore is rated in very good condition. The applicant measured pavement widths in Bluestone from the intersection of Beg Park Drive to Denver Avenue, and found widths ranging between twenty-eight and thirty-two feet, which is the same paved width as a current city standard for an urban local street. Heavy vehicles such as garbage trucks, sewer vac trucks, snowplows already use this road regularly and do not create structural concerns. Based on potholes of nearby road sections constructed contemporarily with Bluestone, the road section is equivalent to a current surfacing section of four inches of asphalt and fifteen inches of overall aggregate. Utilities were stubbed to the property in South Meadows Drive for connection and future extension. For the water system, the existing stub in South Meadows is an eight-inch water main. The nearest fire hydrant is at South Meadows and Bluestone Drive, which has an available fire flow of twenty-three hundred gallons per minute. For the sewer system, there's a hundred and sixty-seven gallons per minute capacity remaining downstream, and the proposed project is expected to generate less than fifty gallons per minute during the peak hour. And if that'll turn it back to Donnie.
The growth policy identifies this area as urban residential, which supports moderate to higher-density residential uses, including multifamily housing. The proposed RA one zoning is compatible with the designation and with the surrounding urban residential character of the neighborhood. While typical apartment projects in Kalispell often utilize three-story designs, this project is limited to two stories and will remain under thirty-five feet in height. The applicant has voluntarily increased the rear setback to thirty-five feet compared to the minimum requirement of ten feet. This provides additional separation from the neighboring single-family homes. Landscaping, buffering, and open space have been designed into the site plan to further soften the transition between uses and to reduce potential impacts of surrounding properties. The proposal includes four point eight acres of open space, which is above the minimum required. A pedestrian walking path is planned to loop throughout the property and connect with the South Meadows extension, providing internal and external connectivity. The site plan also incorporates a children's playground and landscaped green areas. Along Ashley Creek, a two-hundred-foot natural buffer is proposed, along with an engineered stormwater plan intended to address water quality. The clubhouse is designed to contain a leasing office, resident lounge, coffee bar, small workspaces, and a gym. Alpine Geotechnical conducted extensive site investigation in July twenty twenty-five. Their team drilled eleven boreings at the depths ranging from seven to thirty-two feet. Groundwater was encountered between twelve and fifteen feet below the surface. Their analysis determined that native lean clay soils on the site can support foundations with an allowable bearing capacity of two thousand pounds per square foot. For paving, they recommended a section consisting of four inches of asphalt, over six inches of aggregate base, and ten inches of subbase. The project site is classified as sematic category D, which is typical for this region. The report recommends enhanced oversight during construction to ensure stability and compliance with design standards. The Kalispell Planning Commission updated staff report K A twenty-five dash oh five and K C U twenty-five oh four as findings of fact and forwarded to recommendation to Kalispell City Council that the annexation with the initial RA one zoning as an amendment of the city zoning map be approved subject to twenty listed conditions. The North Meadows multi-family project includes seven two-story apartment buildings, a central clubhouse. The development provides a hundred and six, a hundred and seventy-six parking spaces, which meets city standards. Building placement is designed to maintain distance from Ashley Creek in order to protect the repairing corridor. The proposal is consistent with the city's growth policy, zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations. It introduces additional housing while incorporating design elements intended to limit impacts to adjacent properties, provide internal connectivity, and include recreational and social amenities to restaurants. The conditional use permit for the multifamily housing is also recommended for approval, subject to twenty conditions. These conditions address requirements related to infrastructure. This concludes the staff presentation for North Meadows multi-family project. At this time, we welcome any questions from the City Council and prepared to provide clarification on traffic, design, utilities, or other aspects of this proposal.
Questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few questions. One, I've kind of eyed this property in the past because I've been very interested in the idea of a kind of a future park system along Ashley Creek here, looking at some of the properties south of Legends, an idea of maybe someday the city might be able to acquire some of these properties, provide access, get a public trail along Ashley Creek, and extending to this property potentially. So I guess my question is, being a conditional use permit, would there be anything legally preventing us from conditioning the project on tying a trail system to a public trail system on adjacent properties if it were to exist? In other words, the condition wouldn't kick in unless there were a public trail system to plug into?
So it's a discretionary action. Certainly, Council would have to make a finding. The one difficult thing is we don't have a plan for a trail system through there. So usually, when you tie a condition to something, it's tied to some sort of standard of some sort of plan that you would do it to. Now, certainly, I, there may be other ways to do what you're saying, but as far as a community trail system for a trail that doesn't exist in any of our planning, that's kind of difficult.
But we're updating our Parks Plan soon. If we include it in that, would that, the fact that it's done afterwards, would that be an issue, or?
Yeah, like I said, I mean, you have an action before you tonight. We don't even know when that, that plan could still be months out, and I don't even know the details of what this area is being designated as, so I would be speculating at best.
And there's always the option to look at easements and things for trails later.
Then, in terms of traffic analysis, just want to confirm, this has come up before, but we don't have a safety analysis that's incorporated as part of our traffic analysis, correct?
They, I believe in their update, they did do crash analysis and found that it was typical for other roads of the same category, so.
But does that include a kind of assessment of pedestrian safety?
Say that again, sorry.
Pedestrian safety analysis?
No, no pedestrian safety analysis.
Okay. And then, so our code with the subdivision requires a two-hundred-foot riparian buffer. I heard staff report say two-hundred-foot buffer, but that's, I measured it, there's at least parts of this where there's not a two-hundred-foot buffer, so I just want to clarify that it's not, not two-hundred-foot all along Ashley Creek, all along this property buffer, correct?
So you're right, the subdivision regulations say that there's a two-hundred-foot buffer that can be reduced based upon submitted information such as a geotech or, you know, riparian studies or so forth. It's not a subdivision here, so there's no regulation that applies to that. It is something that they tried to design around in order to maintain that corridor as best as they could. It was a little tricky because when you look at the creek, it goes and kind of zigzags, and so it really kind of varies through there, and in some places, I think it's more than two hundred and some it's less. But again, there's no regulation that specifies that they would need to maintain that buffer in this situation.
So yeah, the southwest corner wouldn't meet the two hundred feet, but that's where the primary access to the site is. So the, what Council's faced with is, the primary access to the site, you wouldn't be able to meet the two-hundred-foot requirements, so you obviously would have to evaluate that in regards to what use does a property even have then, as a private property?
As I measured it, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see a map with a two-hundred-foot line on it, but as I measured it, it didn't go all the way to the southern property line there at the western side. That's the two-hundred-foot there? Because down, because down on that western side indicated to me, like, you could do a hard right turn, once you get onto the property, and still be within the two-hundred feet, or not infringe on two-hundred feet. So, yeah, as currently designed, that round, that kind of turnaround definitely infringes in that building off to the west, infringes on the two-hundred feet, but if you did a, you could still develop in it if you put the road kind of a right turn right there at the property line, I would think. Anyways, it, I mean, that's not the design, but that's, I do think there's room there where you could have respected that two-hundred-foot buffer. But, you know, I've brought this up in the past, I, benefits to buffer, wildlife habitat, water filtration, bank stability, and so on, none of that changes if it's, when it's not a subdivision. So I don't understand why those rules apply subdivision, but not when it's not subdivision. I don't know if, I guess, a question of that, why, is there any history there or any understanding from staff as to why the buffers would apply to subdivision, but not in a situation like this where there's not a subdivision?
They got incorporated into the subdivision regulations based on comments from Fish and Wildlife. There's no state regulation or federal regulation that would require that type of a setback. Most streams, it's fifty, because it's an impaired stream, talked about two hundred. Some of the concerns that, on some of the different river bluffs that are around here have to do with geotech and sloping banks. It's not as much of a concern because it's not as big of a bluff here, and they did provide a geotech along with that. It's something that could be incorporated in some ways into the zoning ordinance. We usually address something like that through the geotech, through the building permit, but the fact of the matter is, is it's only incorporated into the local subdivision regs. It's not a state standard or a federal standard or any other local standard through zoning or any other ordinance that we have. And even within the subdivision regulations, that's, two-hundred feet is the starting point. That can be reduced through a number of different things, including geotech information. Stillwater bend, for example, that was reduced based on maintaining and improving and restoring some of that riparian buffer that would be there. And that's part of what they're trying to do here is to maintain that corridor that comes through there, and basing it on the geotech information. So arguably, the same buffer would apply even if it was a subdivision, because it's not a tarred two-hundred feet. That's just a starting point.
Yeah, I don't want to get in a huge debate about our code, but I have a lot of problems with our code and the loopholes in it, and the idea that if you provide geotech, there's lots of reasons for a buffer, not just geotech. So just because you provide a geotech, doesn't allow, doesn't negate all the other benefits of a buffer to allow for that reduction in size. I've mentioned that before, but, and we have a whole separate code section on geotech, so I don't know why geotech would be the point of, you know, the key point on this section of code when you have a whole different section on geotech reports. Anyways, I don't want to get in a debate about it. It's something I, hopefully someday we'll be able to fix that coax. I see all sorts of problems with it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Hunter? This point, no? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding is this development was originally introduced as a mirror of South Meadows, single-family dwellings. When did that change and why?
Well, this property's not even in the city at this point, so it was never part, or otherwise it would already be annexed. So initially, it could have been platted as a phase of South Meadows, but the property, it's privately owned, it's been sitting in probate for decades, so likely that's the reason. It just, at a certain point in time, the property got tied up and never developed at the same pace as the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, that's the easy, the easy answer, but I can't speculate why it didn't. The economy's changed, times have changed, housing demands have changed since that neighborhood was originally built. But yeah, that's why the road is stubbed out to it with the idea that it would be developed in the future. At a certain point, there was actually another right-of-way extension where a house has since been built that would have been provided a second access into the property, but like I said, it's just been decades of sitting there and times have changed. But like I said, it's just been decades of sitting there and times have changed.
And again, the traffic study was conducted when?
The original traffic study was May of 2025 and the addendum, give me a second. It was July 31st of 2025?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Question I had, Mr. Nigron. Annexation, is that typically at the pleasure of the council? Or is there compelled, something that compels?
Um, well, I mean, we have an annexation policy. It's also at the discretion of the council to do it. But when you have, certainly when you're wholly surrounded and you got services right adjacent to the property, and it's also kind of part of our extension of services plan, not just our annexation policy, but it, um, it would lead to the city.
Um, I, I saw where some of the traffic meters were placed and it doesn't account for all the traffic. I, I saw where some of the traffic meters were placed and it doesn't account for all the traffic that goes through those neighborhoods over there. So I would just like to make that abundantly clear to the members of the council here, to you, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't account for peak traffic and reference to, uh, the ballgames that regularly take place on Big Park Road. It doesn't account for the traffic that, uh, goes in and out of the dog park that's right there. And I don't know where the traffic meters were placed on Denver Avenue or potentially Sunnyside. This development jeopardizes the safety of residents all through that entire corridor because it is a main throwaway used by more people than you probably realize. That has been my home of record since the mid 90s when that home was built. It was one of like three that were built there to begin with, that my grandparents had built, that I later bought from them. So just to give you a little bit of background about myself. But the purpose of me speaking to you here today is to urge you not to permit the proposed apartment complex in this particular area. Reasons why? Number one, our community is at a breaking point when it comes to essential services. And I understand you've probably heard this all before, but, um, I'm going to go ahead and say it anyways for the folks that maybe can't make it tonight. Uh, our schools are already full. I can say that because I'm in the local education system, my wife is in the local education system. There is no room for additional students without displacing additional resources or lowering the quality of education for our students that are already in the school system here. When classrooms are already filled to capacity and educational resources are stretched to the point of making significant budget cuts in the district, which they have been, where will more children go? And this is a rhetorical question, obviously. I'm not expecting any response from the members of this chamber. But how much further can the resources and staff be expected to stretch? My wife and I both work here in local education. We speak from firsthand experience. The system cannot absorb this kind of growth without consequences for each and every student. Our emergency services are already task saturated. Adding hundreds of new residents would further strain police, fire, and medical responders who are already stretched thin. These are the very people our community relies on in moments of crisis. And yet this development would potentially ask them to do more with less once again. That is not sustainable. It is not a sustainable plan. And it is not fair to any one of them or any member of our community. It's important to be clear about what this project is not. This development does not address the urgent need for low-income housing in this region. It will not reduce the hyperinflated housing costs facing working families in Kalispell. In fact, it increased, it risks increasing pressure on the market while adding no relief for the people who need it most. And the idea that we're facing an absolute shortage of rental housing is not supported by reality. Right now, you look at your smartphones, there's over 250 rental listings lit right now online within less than 10 minutes driving distance from this exact location. We don't need more of the same. What we do need is the right kind of housing that serves this community. We've heard about the traffic studies and soil samples and survey results presented as evidence for this project, maybe evidence is not the appropriate term, excuse me. But those documents only represent pieces of this, of a much broader picture. The bigger picture is the people that you represent, the families who live here now and the long-term stability of our community. Even within the technical presentations that are troubling, there are some troubling inconsistencies. Anticipated traffic numbers varied between previous presentations. That alone raises questions about reliability and credibility. Some physical dimensions were also misrepresented. I am not a city planner, but I am a tradesman and I know how to run a tape measure and the numbers don't add up. The developers may be meeting the, meeting the minimum legal requirements for their proposal, but this is one of those rare scenarios where doing the bare minimum is treated as an acceptable practice. Only residents within a certain radius were required to be notified, even though hundreds more will be absolute, absolutely be directly affected. The traffic studies, we were told, are within acceptable limits. The environmental impacts were assessed and were deemed to be within acceptable limits. It begs the question, how is it an acceptable practice to just meet the minimums? Any other application of this strategy in any facet of our lives would constitute a recipe for failure. Professional responsibilities, social circles, family life, the list goes on. Somehow it's all within acceptable limits when it comes to a decision that will directly affect the lives of several hundreds of residents and their families. At the surface, everything looks technically compliant. But at the human level, the impact this project will have on our community far exceeds the limitations of my neighbors speaking in this chamber tonight. And that may go without saying, but it bears repeating, the real consequences will be felt by the people who live here, not just on paper, but in our daily lives. This decision is not about paperwork, it's about people. It's about whether you, as council members, will prioritize the well-being of your constituents over the interests of outside developers. This project directly impacts the people who already live here, work here, raise their families here, pay taxes here, and vote here. This very room is full of those people tonight. They are watching and they will remember what you said. The decision before you is about them, not about one developer, not about a hypothetical future population. At the end of the day, the value of this community should not be measured by an expanded tax base. It is measured by the quality of life of the people who already call Kalispell home. These folks aren't numbers, they're people with families. Please choose to value this community and its people over a short-term revenue gain. I urge you to reject this project, not just on technical grounds, but because it is what Kalispell's future deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fred DeLipper, 39 Austin Street. This is the most horrendous project that I've seen being proposed in this community yet. I'll raise a couple of issues. Bluestone, I don't feel safe to walk there. This traffic study is bogus. Children use Bluestone to commute to Rankin School. There is no sidewalk, there is no bike path, there's lots of speeding. I don't feel safe to walk there. Okay, little history. I've lived in that neighborhood since 2003. The city approved what is known as Stratford Village. They did borings for groundwater, just like they did here. Did they do that in late winter, early spring, when the groundwater is high? Or did they do it during another record drought summer when the groundwater is low? Apparently in my neighborhood, they did it when the groundwater was really low. So they built basements, they built crawl spaces, almost all of them, except mine, for some reason, filled up with water. Subsequently, the city was sued. The developer was sued because people wanted compensation for their losses. Do we want another liability with a piss-poor proposal of a development? Do we want to subject children to horrendous traffic? Bluestone cannot handle another 100 cars, let alone 300, possibly 600. Please vote your conscience. This is a horrendous proposal. If the city is going to annex this area, it would be a beautiful place for bike trails, a playground, a green zone, a beautiful riparian area with walking trails where people can recreate. Another little piece of history, because I got to know the developer of Stratford Village quite well. He offered the city, so this is a long time ago, I've lived here a long time. Also, you may not have this history. The developer offered the city of Kalispell two free lots for a playground, for an area to recreate, to sit down with your dog on a park bench. The city council voted it down. They did not want to maintain another park. The developer said, okay, great for me. It's great for my pocketbook. I can sell two more lots. So we don't have a playground. Why not annex this area and make it right for the community? Our children deserve it. I personally don't have children. We have a lot of children in the neighborhood. There's a lot of speeding going on. I'm surprised that we, we haven't seen a fatality yet. So saying that Bluestone is adequate for this kind of development is the biggest bullshit, excuse my French, that I've heard yet in this community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you need my name again? Um, Jessica Chance, 1934 Bluestone, if you need that. I appreciate Mr. Hunter actually sticking up for what he said he was against, which was developments that sprawl into our rural areas and encroach on our river and wetland habitat. So I appreciate you at least questioning that. I find it interesting that we just passed to have a park to preserve Ashley Creek Corridor. Everybody applauds that. But a mile and a half down the road, nobody cares about Ashley Creek anymore? Hey, that seems very odd to me. Bluestone has no curbs, no sidewalks. It has cars and a drainage ditch, insufficient drainage ditch. I've said this before, poor Mr. Graham's heard it a couple of times, but I was the recipient of a free sump pump when I bought that beautiful little house on Bluestone. Lucky me. I find it interesting that we're relying on a geological tech, geotech, whatever, study that is closer to the water, yet somehow there's no flooding. I guess it only floods inside the community. I don't know. I mean, I'm pretty sure most of us have had flooding and had to use our sump pumps. So, um, I'd be curious if that same geotech was the same company that geotech the rimrock falling into the creek. Just, I, I don't know. This project, though, was designed, again, using our bare minimums because somehow that's become acceptable. And it was designed for one car per unit based on the city's requirements. This one, I think, it's been sold to us as a benevolent project because it's only two stories, which, great. Um, and they have one and a half parking spots per unit. Wow, that's exciting. So for a one-bedroom apartment, if there were minimally two cars, for a two-bedroom, you can assume that there's probably going to be three. And for a three-bedroom, you can probably assume there's going to be four cars or more because nobody can afford the housing cost out here and everybody has to share a place. There's a mom, a dad, maybe a couple of kids, maybe a couple of sets of adults. So where are those people going to park if this is based on one and a half cars per unit? It's not tenable. It, it doesn't make any sense. You cannot park on Bluestone. If there's two cars parked on a road, nobody can get through. I can barely mow my lawn. I have to step into the road. And I'm almost getting mowed down by cars, which brings me to the traffic study. I don't know what traffic study to believe because we've heard three different versions of it. One, two, yeah, three different versions of it. I can tell you that, I'm not sure where they got the speed of this average 32, but I can tell you that when I watched the little da-da-das that you run over, they were placed on a curve. People slow down on a curve. The straightaway is a NASCAR track. I live on the straightaway. It is, it is dangerous. I can barely get out of my driveway. I don't entertain at my house because I don't have on-street parking. I have a garage and a driveway that holds two cars. I don't want to inconvenience my neighbors. This project has no access to a main road anywhere. So everything has to go through Bluestone or around some small residential area. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, not with 99 units. Fire trucks can't get in there. What happens when you have, I mean, yes, trash trucks and municipal utility trucks come through, they use the road once, they pick up trash, they leave, they don't park there. They're not coming in with dump trucks full of concrete, whatever fill they're going to have to fill to try to sure up this Ashley Creek area that they claim is safe. Again, drainage is a huge, huge, huge problem, huge problem. I don't think anybody in this room has not had flooding issues. And I just live on the other side of this proposed, this proposed project. The other fear of this is, how many amendments are we going to make? Like the PUD, I mean, how many times are they going to ask to come back and make changes? And how many more times are we going to have to have this same conversation over and over again? It's just, I mean, I, we've been hearing, it fits in the city's plan. If it fits in the city's plan, why do we have 20 conditional use permits? Why are there so many conditions to something that supposedly fits in a plan? That, I don't think it fits at all. You know, they say it's compatible with the current neighborhood. It's not. We all have single-family residents. That's not single-family. These people don't own their homes. They have absolutely no ownership. And I feel that people that have ownership of their property have a little more respect for the people that actually live there. These people are transient by nature. That's why they rent. I'm just, I'm not really sure how this works. I think it's awful. I think we could do a million better things with that. I realize it's private property, but I think this is terrible. And I truly hope that you consider the humans in this room tonight that have showed up for three meetings now to absolutely reject this project. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Karst and I'm at 1855 North Belmont Drive. I spoke last time, but there's a couple of points that I'd like to make. The one regarding the, um, traffic study is that the future of the bypass will have an exit onto Sunnyside, both northbound and southbound. And that, I feel, would make these current traffic studies obsolete. The 200-foot barrier was recommended by a letter to the developer and planning board, I believe, by the FWP. The FWP recommending this can expose the developer to a lawsuit. FWP suggestions can form a basis for civil lawsuits and local government action. If ignoring them, sorry, I hate public speaking, uh, and development results in environment down, environmental damage- and development results in environmental damages and other harm. Montana law recognizes that the state has a fiduciary duty to protect and conserve national resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Patrick Hawkins. I live at 1731 Bluestone Drive. I've lived in my current residence for 22 years. And at that time, everything south of that, south of Bluestone in that would be the western section there of Stratford Village was yet to have been developed. I am one of those individuals that was, experienced the consequence of a poor drainage issue as in the third, fourth year of living in my current house, my basement flooded, as did all the other ones on my street. So I, I'm another member that does not trust these studies. That area has historically been a slump. I mean, anyone that's lived here, and I've had longtime residents tell me it's like, "That should have never been developed." And that whole development was opposed at one point as well. And there was a community action to try to get it to not be developed. That would be over 20 years ago now. So I stand tonight in opposition to this development. I also wanna make sure that the council members are also aware of a current online petition that has nearly 500 signatures on it. Nearly 500 signatures despite the fact that, of the limited notice given to the local community there. Since I've lived there, I've watched the current traffic patterns. I don't trust the analysis either. But regardless, that's what we have and that's, those are the data points we have to go to. We're talking about a 99-unit development which seems intentionally designed to place it at the maximum number allowed based on the current area. 99 units. Because that's the most you can have if there's only one ingress, egress, and ingress. That's the most. Can't have more than nine, they cannot have more than 99 units there according to the information I gained the first time this came up to the planning commission. So the idea that they're voluntarily limiting it to two stories, that's great. But you can't have more, so it's not exactly a big, a big, that's not a big deal. It's easy to get credit for something when you have a limited amount available. Staff continues to use the term "primary access," city staff. Let's be clear, it's the only access. And if I remember right from the first planning commission when this came up, the reason it's not a residential neighborhood is because then it would be required to have another ingress and egress. Don't quote me on that, I'm not a city planner. But if I remember correctly, that's what I heard, which is why it's a multi-family unit. And this ingress and egress is onto a residential neighborhood, as has already been stated, does not have the capacity to handle an additional 500 cars. If that study is accurate, which we can all pretty much, I think, agree that it's probably gonna be greater than that. As has been mentioned, Bluestone has no sidewalks, greatly increasing the risk of pedestrians. I drove westbound on Bluestone this morning, right before school, into the rising sun at 10 miles an hour as I watched kids riding their bikes to go to school. I love seeing these kids ride their bikes. We hardly see that anymore as I, my kids are grown now, but it's almost everybody drove their kids to school or drives their kids to school anymore. And so I love seeing those kids. But I was at 10 miles an hour. That's me. I'm practically a grandfather's age. And I wasn't in a hurry to get anywhere, unlike the majority of the people that will be going down that road westbound at that time in the morning. Or eastbound at 4 o'clock in the afternoon is just hitting the ridge above the park. These traffic numbers will greatly increase the strain on already strained northern route to Fifth and Seventh Avenues, in addition to Seventh Street for anyone that's going to Hutton Ranch. And let's be honest, everyone goes to Hutton Ranch area at some point. Just recently, in the last, say, month, the eastbound side of Fifth Avenue West, south of 11th Street, has had no parking on the street signs put up. That's the impact that we're seeing these patterns have to have. Those people that have lived in those homes on Seventh, on Fifth Avenue have had to change their lives due to these increased traffic patterns. They can no longer pull up in front of their house and park. They have to either bother their neighbors on the other side of the street or find someone else, someplace else to park. And there's a few houses that are pretty tight. God bless them. I mean, they're doing it. Again, the, oh, nope. It has been stated, there's already an overabundance of rental units. And again, this does not address the affordable housing issue we have. It seems to continue to be a reaction to a recent history of where there was a lack of housing in this valley. Especially a lack of this type of housing, and that lack no longer exists. I think it's time to subdue our response to that. There's already a plenty of housing of this type online with more approved to come online. And so we're gonna shove this into the last, shove this into a very narrow area that, as I've stated, is already, doesn't need it. The last traffic study mentioned an average speed of 26 miles per hour on Bluestone. Well, put two speed humps in the road and you're gonna see lower numbers. Which, because in the last, about a year ago, two speed humps were put between Sunnyside and Bluestone on Denver. Speed humps in a, on a city street. Again, another indicator of what kind of traffic patterns that we're seeing in this neighborhood. So that's, that's the end of my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ricky Moffett. I live at 147 Rimrock Court. Thank you, council members and mayor. So just to start off, I know a lot of these points have already been hit over and over and I'm gonna try my best not to repeat any of them for you. I think one of the main things, for us, we've heard this three times now and for most of you, besides Mr. Graham, this is your first time hearing the presentation. There's still some major unresolved issues between the first meeting and the second meeting that I'd really like to point out. One of them are shifting numbers. So of course, the traffic numbers have shifted. Staff, city staff called it rounding or methodology, but standards moved without new safety mitigations. Those issues really weren't addressed. Whenever, you know, between the first meeting and the second meeting, it was just noted as supplemental information was given. But we weren't privy to that supplemental information. So to us, it's, it's still a mystery of, you know, what really did change. The street width was one of those things that's already been brought up. Altering clearance, parking, and fire access assumptions, sidewalks and safe routes. So those are left to the existing neighbors. And the only solution that was named by city staff was, "We weren't going to like it." And that was going to be a special improvement district. Or it was never said, but the infirmant of possibly imminent domain of, "This is what we can do because we have the right of way." And you're right, we wouldn't like that. And that's not what we're wanting. We understand, I understand, that the existing problems are not the issue with the projected development. But that doesn't mean that they don't exist. You can't just suspend reality and common sense and say, "Well, this isn't my problem" and put our blinders on when it really is. And that kind of leads me down here to my next point, which is the schools and the growth policy. We were misinformed or wrongly advised in the first July meeting that schools were not to be considered in this, that it was out of jurisdiction. But Montana state law says that it is, especially when it's a quasi-judicial, I can talk, I'm promised, judicial matter, which tonight is. And so what that means is, by statute, zoning and CEP decisions must be made in accordance with the growth policy and to be designed to facilitate the adequate provision of schools along with transportation and utilities. Rankin Elementary School, I have documented from 2022. It was at 97% capacity. Today, I verbally spoke with one of the staff members there. They are over capacity. They're making children, they have three volunteers to a classroom in some ways just to get enough adult-to-student ratio. That's not okay. Where would these kids go? It's just not right. And I can provide you the sources for all of these quotes as well. Another issue that I have is, there's some things that are measured by the traffic study that affect real life but can't be measured on just a level of service traffic study. And that's the winter time, different conditions. I don't know where those kids would ride their bikes to go to school when the snow is plowed on the side of the road and there already isn't sidewalks. It just wouldn't work. And the fog in the winter, which is three-quarters of the year, as we all know, it's so dark. When you're going, just the way the geometry of the neighborhood works, when you're driving your student to Rankin, the sun is right there in your eyes. And sometimes you have to hold your head out the window or sometimes you have to just pray to God you don't hit anybody because it's just right there in your face. But the fog really makes the sun bounce off and it's just a bad, bad situation that can't be quantified on a level of service study. I know that I've spoken in the past about the geology of the area and there were some things that were great on SLAB was what was proposed, excuse me, proposed, to be the issue with that. But what really got me in this next, in this recent presentation, and I'll read for you, is the classification of D. What that means is, category D is expected to experience severe and destructive ground shaking during an earthquake. This is mid-to-high-risk classification used in building codes to determine the level of seismic resistance required for a structure. So if we already know that the ground is unstable and it's been classified as a slope failure, there's a soft shoulder all around. And I appreciate the 200-foot border there, which at minimum, theirs is 55 feet. Maximum, if you draw a diagonal and really shoot for it, it's 200. It's not 200 all the way through, but it's just a dangerous area. Backyards have slid off the owner's property. Documented property damage has occurred. I know that I've brought that up in previous meetings, but it is real. So I would like to know, are there any special considerations put in place for building such buildings on this type of ground where it's been documented to be soft soil, it's glacier silt? Anything that, you know, could be proven to where the stormwater isn't going to be pumped into Ashley Creek or run into our backyards causing more property damage and landslides? I guess I would just like to know what reinforcement measures are in place. And then one of the other issues I have too is, the application itself contains a concrete misstatement about access. There's a material error in that. So, and the newest one, the amended application, it reads, "Access to the site will be provided by an extension of South Meadows Drive. South Meadows Drive links to Airport Road. In fact, your July hearing confirmed a cul-de-sac and no built connection. Any future link was only hypothetical." That's a material error in the adequate access section. So theoretically, the application itself is talking about streets that don't exist because there is no connection between South Meadows Boulevard and Airport. They're only taking the two biggest streets and making them seem like they connect to each other. Ironically, in the presentation that we saw today, they did correctly note that you do cross Bluestone and Bag Drive as well. You have to use both of those streets to get from South Meadows to Airport. So this would be in a donut hole of a residential neighborhood that's already developed and it really does not fit the character of anything. And lastly, I guess I will end with this point here. Is, if this project can only pencil by toggling between minimum standards and maximum allowances and by shifting sidewalk costs to existing homeowners via special improvement districts and making rules fit one area and not another area, we're not held to the same standard. I don't believe that this is responsible infill and it's risk externalization. Please protect our nature's safety, our landscape's safety, the public's safety, and the neighborhood's established character is what I ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name's Kyle Voitlander. Candidate for Ward 3 for the city of Kalispell. 840 Fourth Street West is the address. I realize I don't say that often, so I apologize. I'm here to stand up with the people behind me, with the public comments that's been made. I kept my nose out of this subdivision for quite some time. I heard about it as soon as it was announced by the city that it wanted, that they wanted to annex it. And I wanna get one thing straight because multiple community members have approached me about this. Nobody's against the annexation. I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. What they disagree with is this mass-density housing, which I have spoken on. And I'm not gonna go off about snow plowing and fire and EMS. We all know that. You guys all know my standpoint on that. Again, we have single-family dwellings in a tight neighborhood that is stuck in the 60s or 90s with no sidewalks, no proper parking, tiny homes, schools, parks, or, I won't even say park, a ball field and a dog park that get used by community members outside Ward 4. Now, my district, Ward 3, basically butts up against this. We see the remnants of this. So, living on the west side of town, unlike my constituent, I see what these residents in this neighborhood see. I see what the neighborhood, the residents in my neighborhood see and my neighbors see and they have, we all have to deal with. And yes, speeding is a factor. You're not gonna stop somebody from speeding. We know this. We've had this discussion over and over again. But how many more cars, how many more people can we put on the road before there is a big issue? Now, I'm probably one of the few companies, again, that drive a truck and trailer through tight spaces, but I see it every day. One of the contractors that I work with lives over in this neighborhood. My old neighbor lives over in this neighborhood. And both of them have said to me, "Kyle, you gotta do something about this. You gotta say something about this." And I'm not, you know, people may view me, I'm anti-development. I'm not anti-development. I'm anti-unsafe and improperly planned development. Again, and I've, I've mentioned this before, Ryan Hunter, you said you were against annexing farmland and wetland areas, yet that's the very, very thing that you do over and over and over again. Tronstad, up by Glacier, south of town. You guys have voted over and over and over for this.
I voted against Tronstad.
You did on that one? Okay. And thank you for that. Thank you for standing up. We disagree on things, but we do come together. So I wanna look at the rendering of this and if the city planner can pull up the pretty image of the rendering on it. It showed these multi-story complexes in the backyard of these residential units. And I don't know about you or what neighborhoods you all live in or what house you live in. But personally, I don't wanna be in my kitchen and have somebody in an apartment looking down in my backyard at me and my family. I don't. That's not why you buy a single-family dwelling. Again, single-family dwellings in this area, probably the right choice. I think they're on to something with giving the buffer and the bike, the path. That's all pretty and all, but you get into who's maintaining it and that down the road. You know, I want, I want our parks to be improved. I wanna work with our Parks Department. I wanna work with our Public Works Department. And we're at a strain. We know we're at a strain. The studies that these gentlemen bring up in every single annexation that I have watched is, "Well, our system can accommodate it." Well, okay, today, as we stand here, sure, sure, it can accommodate it. But in two years from now, when Tronstad gets built out or By Glacier High gets built out, can our system withstand it then? Or are we gonna be in the same boat taxing people higher, charging people higher rates on the strain? This isn't only Kalispell. We know it. We know it's across the west. We know affordable housing is not the answer. We have plenty of housing. Unfortunately, we're in a tough, rock and a hard place and we have to wait it out. Eventually, the housing cost and rising costs will come down. It's just a matter of time. Many community members have approached me, and I preach on this as well, is that we need to bridge the community and council relationship. You know, this wasn't, this was put out there, but again, it's changed so many times, nobody knows what's happening. So it should be front and center. Hey, we're working on this. We want your, we want your input now. And that brings me into the planning board meeting, which from my understanding, one person removed- one person removed themselves because of a conflict of interest. And in the, in between two other meetings, this other personnel in the group totally removed themselves from the planning board. And now I'm being told that some, some votes are going to be suppressed. And if that happens, we got bigger issues. I want to improve our fire and police and we can't keep putting a strain on them. We have a levy out in place that went through, we haven't acted upon it. So let's get the firefighters we need. Let's get the police we need. We claim, Mark, you said it when you voted on the budget for the year, that we're at fa- full capacity of our police. Well, if we're at full capacity, why are we not responding? Why is our, our responder strained? I hear it time and time again on the street. I talk to them. I talk to the officers. And we need to rein in our expansion. Obviously, this is what Ryan and Sid had talked about at the, at the chamber. They said, we need to, we need to close the gap within our city and not blotch and spread out. But we got to do it smartly. So I'm not saying, don't annex it. I, I think our vote should be, yes, annex it. But no to this specific development. And obviously, we are in early stages. And two last things is in this, you, you talk about the conditional use permit. And I'm very hesitant about these conditional use permits. And, you know, as I, if I get elected and I, I read more about them, I will learn more about them. But as far as I'm concerned is it's kind of a slippery slope from what I'm seeing. So there's that. And last but not least, one of the things that was mentioned to me was there's a hundred people in this, not today, but say there was a hundred people in this room speaking against this. But the other 10,000 people in the community don't say anything. And well, my vote has to go for those 10 other people is how I interpreted it. And I don't think that's right. With that being said, stop worrying about getting sued and do what's right for the community members that live in this community. So I'm Kyle Voitlander, candidate for Ward Three. I appreciate your vote and support. You guys have a good evening and thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My name's Perry DiOrio. I live at 143 Rimrock Court and I'm a first time homeowner. I saved for 15 years to get my house, which is conveniently located right here. So Ricky was just up. She lives right here. I live right here. And this is this four unit, I guess, one story to just, you know, stick it in a little, but not too much. So I just put a new roof on. I painted my house. I put new windows in. I've done everything to keep up with my neighbors, to make my house look good. And now you're going to stick this behind me and people are going to be looking at me. I got pictures of what I look at. So, and it's not all about my view. But this isn't what I signed up for when I bought my house. And this wasn't, you know, I'm lucky I live 150 feet from the proposal, so. I don't know what else to say. I don't know what else to have you guys be bombarded with, but I know it's been a lot. No one's really happy about this that I can see. I haven't talked to anybody that really wants it to go through. It doesn't seem like it would be a good idea anyway to have to take a bunch of land out, to put a bunch of concrete in, so I can stare at a bunch of people that don't care about their property. Because that's what, I grew up in apartments. And I didn't really care about the surroundings, so there's no ownership. No one really cares and you need multiple people. So it's just that part of your life when you're growing up. It's usually not, you know, 55 and older that are going to be living in these apartments. So I don't really see why you would take a 99 building or a 99 unit and just stick it into a beautiful area and try to make something of it. It does not make sense to me. Doesn't make sense to any of the people that have been here three times to say this. I'm asking you to protect existing homeowners who built their lives and savings here. Like I said, it took me 15 years to get this house and all I've done is improve it and try to keep up with my neighbors because their yards are a little nicer. But, I mean, can't you guys buy the land as the city? I mean, my taxes have gone up 200 every year. I've lived there for three years. So you can charge me a little more tax and I'll put it towards a park going in there. Or even some condos because you have ownership. But apartments just don't make sense in this location. When I look out my backyard and see the mountains and finally got something that, you know, the only asset I have that has equity. It hurts. It's not Kalispell. And I, I, I just, I, I hope you guys can see how many people have come in here and told you how much it's going to affect their lives. And maybe have something to do on a human level instead of just money. And I understand it was in probate or whatever, but there's other ways and other things you can do. And hopefully, I wish I was rich because I would, I'd buy it and make it into a park or where the kids play and the pheasants and the deer and my dogs and, you know, people from the neighborhood. But there's no way that anything good's going to come from this apartment. The house three doors down, everyone tells you the backyard fell in. I mean, how can you guarantee this ain't going to fall in in 10 years? You put enough concrete to make it stand? So I've said my piece three times. And I hope you guys understand what these people are saying out here. And I hope that you can do something to not let this go through. I mean, there's better places. Airport Road had the apartments down there by the bypass. They're not finishing those. Tell them to take it over there. I don't know what else to say, but you know, I've made, I've left work three times to come here and speak to, well, none of you, but Mr. Graham and these people. So I just hope you have it in your heart to look at it from our point of view. And maybe Sunnyside could get a on-ramp to the bypass too. That'd be awesome. Maybe that should be brought up. But again, my name's Perry DiOrio, 143 Rimrock. And I am against this apartment and concrete jungle behind my house that took 15 years to purchase and work my ass off. So I appreciate your time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm a pleasure of the council. This is the power of the gavel. I want to hear everybody, but I got to be able to concentrate, so I need like a five second recess. I'd be some others, so if it would be the pleasure, we're going to do a couple minute recess.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, where's Mr. Graham? Hold on, Mr. Graham was, I thought he was over here.
He's not under here.
He's the last one.
There he comes.
Come on, come on, waiting on you, Mr. Graham. Okay. Out of recess and continuing with public comments.
Ian Calispel, Mayor. I'm gonna apologize a little bit in advance. My name's Mark Top. I live on one oh seven Denver Avenue, which I built in two thousand four, two thousand five. I lived on Blue Stone for three years before that, so I'm pretty native to this area as well as Calispel, Montana, my entire life. I'm gonna apologize if some of this sounds a little bit bitter from some of my fellow residents. We went through the first planning board session, really felt like our concerns were heard in earnest. We were all here in good faith and two hour some odd mark, there was essentially what was understood to be a vote taken. It was four to six against. That wasn't done properly, so the meeting was steered to, oh, well, it's table instead. The developer isn't here. If you think that's not tactical, you're naive. That's a tactical ploy. I've talked to several developers. They wanna see where the cards fall. They wanna get at the table, address concerns, smooth everything over and start again. That burned a bunch of people out. We had less than attendance the second time around. And the second time around sure seemed like people didn't really take our concerns to heart. We all came back, brought our energy and our time and frustration and tried to voice our concerns. And it was just swept under the rug and everyone flipped except for Shelby, who then resigned. So that was pretty disappointing considering that it was four to two against and then it was tabled and then let's go back and forth. You can watch the previous meeting, the first meeting on July eighth, and you can see that is what happened. It's pretty clear. Before the meeting's over, I would like to hear, Ryan, when I emailed you, I was a little bit saddened to hear that you can't meet with your constituency or neighbor constituency on an issue that we have questions and concerns about. I understand that you don't want any impropriety, but pretty sure that's not against state law from everything I could understand. If there's something to gain or maybe a zoning change, or maybe the the feeling that you are giving time to someone who has an ability to gain from your decision, we we would only gain not being overflowed in this neighborhood. So I would like that clarified if we could at a later time this this evening. It's been mentioned before, mid to late fall, driving east to southeast on Blue Stone around that corner, you can't see. I've almost hit people in the road even driving five miles an hour. It's so terrible to try to see around that corner in the fall. Winter and snow piles, kids are walking in the road to school, to the park, to wherever. There's nowhere to go. Construction traffic is gonna be huge. Dump trucks, concrete trucks, semis, materials. Every day, there's gonna be dozens and dozens and dozens of trucks. It's not comparable to a garbage truck that weighs a third of that and has the frequency of once or twice a week. There's a lot more issues and I would hope that if any of you really cared about these issues, you would have already at least a little bit reviewed the incredible outpouring of concerns addressed. At the two prior planning board meetings, one of the traffic issues that hasn't really been talked about a lot is Eleventh Street West when there's a football game. That is running the gauntlet. You cannot hardly get through there. There's people parked on both sides of the road. There's kids and parents and everyone running back and forth across Eleventh Street up to the end of Fourth Avenue where the field's at. And it's it's more daunting than what the baseball games are. But not to short those. This proposal says it's existing and it doesn't matter to the project, but it still affects it. It's still it's still a huge safety issue for that many cars. And with the way that they're saying that splits, that's five hundred additional a day out of that corridor to Airport Road. So it is an issue. We've talked about the water. I've mentioned in the previous meetings, if any of you knew Dale Pierce, he passed away in twenty twenty two on Pierce Manufacturing South of Town. He lived on the corner of Ashley Drive and Sunnyside. And that house, I believe, is built late fifties, early sixties, if I remember correctly. We had water issues in two thousand eleven and it was a whole big deal. I think they put a French drain down Santa Fe Street to alleviate some of that. It helped a little bit, but there there is still major water issues. And I understand that they're gonna do slab on grade and they just don't really seem to care about the water issues in this project. It's gonna cause a whole bunch of mud and clay and stickiness that's going to be tracked for miles in each direction during the construction process of this site. Back to my point with Dale, I'm sorry, I kinda skipped that over. He used to plow that whole area years ago for whoever owned it. I don't know if it was Beg or someone else. He used to plow that whole area and he got his tractor stuck every single spring because of the amount of water on both sides of the creek. That was discussed every time we had it. Him and I would sit and have a beer and chat about it a little bit. The bitterness comes in this from, I think, the last meeting. It's just kinda shrugged off and they said, oh, it's happening everywhere, guys. It's happening here, too. It's happening everywhere. It's not just us. We don't have to become a metropolis. We don't. You guys need to do the responsible thing and say, yeah, that's probably not a good area for an apartment complex. Myself and most of my neighbors that are actively engaged in this, we understand it's gonna be developed. We're all for property rights. That person that owns that property has a right to develop it. Well, everyone wants green space. That's that's a pipe dream. I'll be honest. I agree. It shouldn't be a ninety nine unit apartment complex or even a seventy six unit apartment complex or any of the like. It should stay R four. That neighborhood is single family homes with some townhomes that have been sprinkled in over the last couple decades. I, for one, wouldn't have a problem with that. It's gonna increase traffic a little bit, but the rate of construction is gonna be slower. The the pride in homeownership, or even if someone's renting one of those, they're gonna have more pride in it than just someone that's living temporarily in an apartment complex. Maybe they came here for a temporary job. Maybe they're working remotely. They're in and out. It's transient housing and everyone kind of understands that's what it's for. This is this is a single family home and townhome neighborhood. And that's what need, that's what it needs to be to match. The zoning change is gonna be atrocious due to the safety issues mostly. And we've heard, you know, oh, you don't have a right to views. We all understand that. I'll be I'll be real. We all understand we don't have a right to views. I don't care if it's two stories or three stories. It's it's the pride in the homeownership and the number of cars, the number of people that is going to just infiltrate that entire neighborhood. There's a hundred and seventy four parking spots. There's gonna be probably a hundred more cars than that at any given time if that's fully built out. Those are gonna park along Blue Stone. They're gonna park along South Meadows. They're gonna park along all of the ins and outs and the cul-de-sacs and the side streets in that neighborhood. So lawsuits. It's big. It's not admitted to, but lawsuits control a lot of things. So rolling over to developers that have more money, more leverage than the average residents that you represent is the epitome of cowardice. You've had dozens and dozens and dozens of repeated cries from residents in this area trying to tell you how much of a safety issue the increased traffic and the construction traffic will be. When the when the inevitable happens, a kid gets run over, a car runs through a bedroom of a house and kills someone, they're all thirty feet off the road. This happened on Rocky Cliff Drive the night before Father's Day in twenty twenty. That man's name is Robert Meyer. If we have that many people in that neighborhood with those houses so close to the road, there's gonna be texting and driving. There's gonna be drunk driving, all of the above, and it's going to cause problems. Is that gonna result in a lawsuit as well? Do we get sued by the developer and go back and forth and stand our ground? Or do we just let catastrophe take hold? One of the big things for this neighborhood is when it started out and I think my neighbor, Mr. DiOrio, had the same feeling, maybe more recently than a lot of this. But some of those people that purchased those homes early on when this neighborhood was started, they paid ninety five or a hundred thousand dollars for those those homes. That's their only asset. They've worked their whole lives for that. A lot of them probably paid off. A lot of them have probably drawn cash out to cover living expenses. If this goes in, that's gonna drop the property value. Mr. Beau Carpenter, who couldn't be here tonight, he is an appraiser and we had that discussion. And he's anticipating a fifty fifteen to twenty percent reduction in property costs just by this going in. So there's gonna be a whole lot of home value lost just because these apartments are stacked in next to everyone's house. Again, most of those people worked their own their whole lives for this and that wasn't the deal when they when they purchased. The deal was that it was R four. Everyone understood that. So taking taking that away and pulling the rug out from underneath them on their home is is not a not a very good thing to do. It's not a very human thing to do. I'm fine with I'm fine with development. I'm fine with the apartments. Kinda where they're going, it's a little bit much, but they're right next to arterial roads. There's not kids riding their bicycles on those arterial roads for the most part. There's a bunch of kids riding their bikes on Blue Stone Drive. There's a lot of mention of who's for and against this. Take a good look around the room. There might be a couple of people here that are representing the project that have a financial gain. Every other person is here is not. So that's why we've all come and spent hours here and spent numerous hours getting our talking points, trying to be organized, trying not to waste everyone's time and trying to be clear. None of us do, you know, most of us don't do this. So this is super, super important. That's all I have. So please make the right decision and let's keep it R four. That's my time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lyson Nahara. I live on Rimrock Court. My thunder's been stolen by several people about the safety of the schools and my concern for the children. But we do have another concern. I do particularly as I live on the creek. And two days ago, I had a big black bear in my backyard. And that is a wildlife corridor for for the city of Calispel. I've spoken to many members of the city. I've talked into the bear control and everything. I've even had grizzly in my backyard. And we need to take into account that our wildlife is important. And we need to not put in place another CUP that it can be substantiated with the evidence that we have for wildlife conservation. We have the safety issue for our children and our families. We have access integrity issues. The schools are overloaded. I spoke to a teacher from Rankin last week. Her classroom is set for eighteen pupils. She currently has thirty four and is requesting assistance from parents to help her teach these children. Where's the integrity of our education system if we can't support them today? The neighborhood capa cap, excuse me, compatibility for apartments is not there. As Mark says, we know it's gonna be developed. But an apartment building is not the right type of development for a wildlife area, single family homes, walkers, athletes, kids. Again, the safety has got to be pla- put in place first. So please table this if you have to. Require a corrected application with accurate information as we mentioned earlier. It is not a correct application. It has faulty information in it. It does not have any access to any large streets. We haven't even talked about the other side, the West Side Valley area, which is Sunnyside. And Blue Stone is the only place where kids go. The Sunnyside has the access to the high school. And those kids are on their phones. They're not even looking. I don't know how many times going to work, I have to slam on my brakes because the kid will walk out in the street doing this, not even looking. So please take into account the neighborhood, the neighbors, the safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda Husky and I live on nineteen fifty five Blue Stone Drive. And I've been condensing my original writing quite a bit, so don't panic that you see this many pieces of paper. I wanna thank all of those in my community that have spoken and said many of the points that I would like to point out. But first of all, I want you to know I haven't lived here my whole life. My family and I moved here about two years ago. And we absolutely fell in love with the fact that you can ride bikes and walk because this is so different from where I was in Missouri. In Missouri, everybody was in their car, nobody talked to anybody. And this is like you walk up and down and you wave to people and you already know their names and it's just been amazing. But yes, there have been some challenges when you go from where I live and I try to make it as fast on Blue Stone till I can get to the sidewalks there by North Meadows. And it's like, phew, made it again and then you can relax again. I also have some concerns and maybe it doesn't apply, but somehow I think it does. I don't live on the side where the flooding occurs. I do know there has to be some flooding because in the two years we've been here, almost always when you walk to the dog park, you're gonna step in water. I mean, it's been dry, no rain, and you're gonna step in sludgy water. That water is coming from somewhere. So I can't help but think about a situation that happened to me when we lived in Missouri. Now, I was a school teacher. I lived in the same town, taught at the same district for thirty six years. And I remember a certain situation in which our school district needed to expand. I mean, we were growing at a super fast rate. The most affordable land that the school district could buy was a landfill. I know that's different from a flood zone. Experts were hired, all kinds of tests filled with all kinds of facts and big, powerful, safe sounding words designed to sound legitimate and be reassuring. And these experts told us that special peers would be put in place. The land was safe. Build your school. We did. Ten years later, the floors began to crack. The superstructure buildings with all of their promised precautions in place began to sink. After two more years passed, many of the buildings were labeled unfit and unsafe for children. Anyway, my point is no one can guarantee that this property won't flood or cause problems, no matter how many precautions are taken and promises made. Since this property is prone to flooding, you can bet it will flood again. As my grandfather always said, Mother Nature will win every time. Which then, of course, brings the concern to me about the school districts. Because knowing firsthand, when you get oversaturated with students, some of the things that have to be done is you load up the kids. So there were times that I had thirty five plus students in a classroom and it's really, really hard to meet all their needs when you have that many kids in a room. It's just almost impossible. But back to this situation, for me, it's about common sense and safety. You can debate about how the traffic and you counted the cars and I'm sorry, no matter how you look at it, it's going to increase an already oversaturated area with cars. So since the last meeting, I sorta did this little thing on my own. And that is I made a goal to walk every day. I would go from my house to the dog park, past my house again to the end of Blue Stone where the wall is. So that whole time might have been, what, thirty five minutes? And every day I calculated what kind of traffic was there. And then I went back and averaged. So all of this was done somewhere between five to seven P M. And on an average per walk, I encountered over forty cars and trucks, eighteen people walking, fifteen bikes, many of those young children, six baby strollers being pushed and some being attached to bikes, five children on scooters and skateboards and numerous dogs on leashes and even many that were not. And now I've been seeing people on segways. That's the new thing going up and down Blue Stone. So it seems to me that the traffic is much heavier on weekdays and during good weather, which would make sense. But I've also witnessed several almost accidents. It was spoken last time that we can't stop progress. What about the landowner's rights? And I understand that. But please, can we build regular homes or duplexes and not oversaturate with these ninety, this ninety nine family apartment building? It just doesn't fit in this area. Please find another solution. So consider all of those who are involved in this situation. If things continue without any modification, I hope those who have the power to make this right can live with the guilt if things go wrong. Is it not clear that the safety and protection of the public is to be provided by and made priority by our leaders in all governing positions? How much money can be made is not the issue. Is Calispel no better than the big cities and other states who have done things cheaply and put money in the pockets of the few with no or little concern for others? I had heard Calispel wasn't like that. The Calispel and the whole valley was about preserving this beautiful land and community. The Calispel puts the needs and safety of its citizens over money making schemes. Remember, progress took this land from the Native Americans, stripped land, making it uninhabitable for wildlife, in in some cases, humans, and made many species of animals extinct or nearly extinct. After all, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Thank you for your time and I pray that those with the power make the right decisions.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Pipolo, one three nine Rimrock Court. I have a couple of things I'm gonna say and they might not flow, so I apologize and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. You see us here. This is my third meeting. Third time I said I wasn't gonna speak and I'm speaking. The developer is not here. I know he has representatives, but he's not here and we are and you represent us. At least I hope you do. I've heard three different things, this is my third meeting, from the first, second and third. I don't even know, I thought our the R A one already passed. My husband asked a council member at the last meeting and he said they voted on it, but it sounds like you're gonna vote tonight. And I like, I'm not against development. I'm not against property rights. When we bought on Rimrock Court in two thousand thirteen, we asked what's gonna go behind us. And we were told it was single family dwelling. So we thought, okay, fine. But now it's wanting to be changed, so I'm gonna ask you to please consider and say no because it's not compatible. I look at this map, which has changed from what I saw online. Those houses that are marked A, right behind them is a soft shoulder. I I don't know, like you were talking about a setback, but Ashley Creek will always take what is hers. It's gonna happen year after year. It'll be slow, but she's gonna keep taking that bank. So I don't understand the A buildings at at all. So again, I just wanna ask you to please consider that this development is going in the middle of a neighborhood. I mean, it just plopped right down inside of it and it's just not compatible. I'm not against it. I'm not against building, but ninety nine units is not compatible to the area. I don't know what I can say to make you change your minds. I don't know if you can table it for more research. You know, we'll come back again, but you're gonna hear the same, the same stories again. There are safety issues. There's development issues. It's not compatible. I don't know what else we can say. I really don't. But I do hope that you're honest because, again, I heard three different things and I'm very surprised that things change. I don't understand. It's my first time being involved in in politics and I I'm sorry, I would I wouldn't do it. I I don't like it. But anyway, thank you and please, please vote your conscience. But anyway, thank you, and please, please vote your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Toby McIntosh, Giacola Engineering, twenty-two fifty Highway Ninety-three South. I appreciate everyone's time this evening. I think I wanted to focus on a few of the technical items that were discussed by, through the public comment, so I apologize that some of this may be information that you understand and know. A couple of things I'd like to touch on is the conditional use permit. Many of the conditions that are on there are very standard language that are on every conditional use permit. And those conditions are really protection for this project when it goes through the permit process, excuse me if you're not hearing my mic, as it goes through the permit process to make sure that what's being discussed here and what's being provided in the applications, what the applicants held through, to, through the design. They're not bait and switch, the conditions are there. Obviously, if there's amendments that the council wants to make, they're, you know, those are open for discussion. I think from an impact fee standpoint, so the developer, Public Works provided me with a, an, um, draft impact fee number, based on the ninety-nine units, uh, it would be four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So that's police, fire, public, you know, water sewer, storm, kind of the standard stuff that's covered under those. So those dollars are to help offset impacts to city services, in addition to then the ongoing tax base that that provides. I, just out of curiosity, pulled up Zillow while I was sitting, sitting in the back. The lowest, the cheapest home in the neighborhood based on kind of the general area for these subdivisions was just shy of four hundred thousand dollars, and the remaining were from four twenty to seven forty. So I understand the homeownership, it's a huge, it's a huge deal, but the down payments that, to attain housing in the Flathead Valley is, is out of reach for many young professionals or young people that are working any sort of job. On the traffic impact study, I'd like to clarify that the data and the numbers did not change from the application to the supplemental information. What was provided was clarification on how the distribution from the development would move through the street network to try and show that the capacity of a local street would still be met based on, um, traffic impact standards. The report, as Keith from Public Works mentioned, expanded on the minimum number of intersections to review. The counts were taken in May. MDT has a traffic gauge station that they use for seasonal adjustment. So in the traffic impact study, it talks about how you seasonally adjust the values based on historical data. In terms of the street width, in all honesty, the traffic impact study with the original application, the street width is not changing the data of the cars and the level of service impact in there. So when there was discussion on the street width, we went out and we field-measured them. So the discrepancy of twenty-four feet that's in the original traffic impact study versus the exhibit that was shown earlier was based on field measurements that we made from our One thing that Public Works clarified after the last meeting, and I, I think some folks had left the meeting already, is the tube counters that were on the inters, on the corner, and the tube counters that were out there were actually city tube counters. Our traffic consultant used radar and video for his traffic counts. And so the speed data that's provided is not based on vehicles going around the corner, but rather on the, on the street stretches. The traffic impact study shows where the volume counts were made. There is a discussion in the supplemental information about the ball fields and how that those, I guess I can read directly from the letter. Existing traffic conditions from Laker and Archie U. Road ball fields along Beg Park Drive were not studied in detail within the T.I.S. The typical congestion and parking issues associated with the ball fields are not directly associated with the proposed North Meadows project, as the development will not increase traffic volumes at the ball fields. Additionally, events like the ball field, events at the ball fields are not regular, regular daily occurrence, and the North Meadows development will not create large amounts of traffic during the times of the ball fields are in operation. From a T.I.S. perspective, it would not be a tip, it would not be typical to analyze for traffic at the ball fields, just as you wouldn't analyze traffic for Good Friday up at the box stores. So the traffic impact study was conducted within the industry standard, it's a third-party consultant that we use that meets the credentials that the city requires. One comment from Counselor Hunter I wanted to just mention is that the minimum design speed for the city on a local street is twenty-five miles an hour, so the radius that you need to bring into, so there's only so much of a hard corner you can make on the corners. I've, I guess argued that a few times with Public Works and have not been successful in winning that on other projects. From an overall parking standpoint, we're providing one-point-seven-eight parking spaces per unit, which does exceed the zoning. We've found with lots of multifamily projects that we, we strive to be as close to two per unit as you can, and that's based on feedback from people that own and operate facilities. So from a geotechnical standpoint, that is correct, we are looking at slab-on-grade, it's pretty common for, uh, multifamily development that way, so crawl spaces and basements won't exist. The geotechnical investigation that's done exceeds what would have been required at the development of those subdivisions, as well as a current subdivision. To get a commercial building permit in, in Kalispell, we have to have a site-specific geotech that analyzes the soils, conditions. There was a comment about site class, classification for seismic activity, pretty much all of Kalispell is a Site Class D. So the same soils that exist here exist across pretty much all of Flag County. In terms of the Rimrock slope failure, there wasn't a lot of discussion on it here tonight. Uh, I can speak a little bit that the two thousand eleven event, the home was constructed fifteen feet from the top of bank, their backyard placed additional fill, built a retaining wall, loaded that slope. There's actually a storm drain from the sub, that phase of the subdivision that runs between the houses where the s- failure occurred. The two thousand eleven Flat Beacon article that was referenced also talked about vegetation removal within the floodway, or within the, excuse me, the, the stream bank of, of Ashley Creek. So I think a lot of factors come into play there. The, the firm that helped represent some of the lawyers in the, in the analysis of the Rimrock failure is who conducted the geotechnical study for our site. They didn't provide recommendations for the original development, they were there to help analyze the failure. So Public Works, I think, can talk a little bit about sidewalks, Blue Stone, and the ability to park on it. I think there was a pretty good discussion during planning boards, I won't revisit here, but if there's questions on that, I know that they were able to answer some of those. It's fairly common to have multifamily, single-family, all-access onto local streets, which is effectively the pavement width of Blue Stone and the surrounding streets meet the, the city standard for urban-local. We're actually restricted access onto collectors and arterials, so we can't just have a multifamily or a development like that access onto the, the higher-classification streets. Again, something we often, I guess, argue with Public Works on, on where can we get driveways. I think there's a little bit of a comment about the speed humps on, on Denver. During one of the, the first planning board meetings, it was discussed that that was a little bit of a trial. I think there were some studies that were done before and after they were put in, and I think, if I remember correctly, Keith can correct me if I'm wrong, what they found is the speeds slowed at the speed hump, and then in between them, it basically was back up to the, the typical speed, s- speed. One of the things that actually helps reduce speeds is friction, and that can also be interpreted as volume. There's other ways to mitigate speed on existing streets, but I think, as we hear tonight, a lot of, a lot of our local streets have speed issues. I think, again, the, the intent here is to try and exceed the zoning standards for multifamily by increasing the buffer, trying to stay below what's allowed by zoning for the building height to help mitigate impact. We could provide more open space by going taller, which, you know, again, usually on multifamily, you are trying to get that density, and you're trying to get the three-story because it keeps your footprint compact. In this case, I think we're trying to strike a balance between increasing green space, but also keeping a lower profile that fits better into the neighborhood. I think that covers most of all my notes, and I'm here to answer any questions as they arise, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Just a couple quick ones. It'd be nice if...
Sir, can you give us your name real quick?
Douglas Andrews. I live on, uh, six forty-four Eighth Avenue West.
Thank you.
And I'm affected by the traffic from Sunnyside and all the people cutting through town. That's always been a zigzag, the south side town, because there's no on and off on the south side of town. North side, no problem, you go up the Highway Two. But those on the south side, you know, you have to get off, well, it's not even worth getting on the, the bypass. It's quicker to just stay on the Ninety-three. But anyway, uh, yeah, there's no on and off ramp at Sunnyside, which, why that was ever approved, God only knows. That would help the situation there. Down the street, Foye's Lake roundabouts and Overpass, uh, you know, started out with one roundabout, and, uh, the southern part of the bypass was supposed to last for twenty years, well, it didn't last for five years, and they were reconstructing it, you know? I would, uh, well, first, I would like to thank all the, uh, City Council for, uh, your work, your dedication, and I know, I don't think any of you or a few of you are paid at all, so, uh, that's nice. I want to thank you for your time, and, uh... One problem I see, uh, I worked up in Glacier for thirty-three years. My career has been with Forest Service and, uh, Park Service, have a degree in forestry, and I did multiple things up in Glacier Park, and, uh... I haven't been retired that long, uh, but, uh... Glacier Park is a zoo today compared to when I started working in Glacier Park. Progress is not necessarily, uh, good, a good thing, and we see that. It's extreme right now in Glacier Park, and the same thing is happening to our, uh, valley, our state, you know? And I'd like to point out that, you know, we used to have, uh, uh, statesmen in our government, and they had the foresight to set land, uh, aside, whether it's parks, forest, I mean, the forest, the, the parks, uh, whatever, you know, people like, uh, John Muir, Bob Marshall, Aldo Leopold, you know? I mean, you think about it, you know, it blows, blows your mind, blows my mind, you know? How did they have the foresight and determination to, uh, set these areas aside, you know, for us and our children and grandchildren? I mean, it's just, uh... Well, we don't have, in our government today, very few statesmen, if any. We have a bunch of politicians, and, uh, right now, they're not doing any of us any good, but be it what, what it may be. So I'm affected by the traffic and, uh, developments, you know, uh, the valley's changing, you know? All these, I don't care whether you're talking about this project or any other project, you know, it's having a big impact on our valley, and, uh, you know, uh... As far as I'm concerned, that whole corridor along Ashley Creek could be set aside, or should have been set aside, for, uh, the Flathead Valley, you know? We got the Bibler project going in, everybody's excited about that, that's a good deal, but how about the rest of it, you know? We got little sections that are gonna be set aside for people to recreon, recreate on and so forth and so on, uh, but it's a re-prairing zone, you know? People talk about wildlife and, and, uh, you know, uh... Well, right there at, uh, Seventh Street and Meridian, you know, on the south side, south, uh, east side of the road, you know, there's that one house that the roof is at the same level as the road, and then there's, there was another house that was taken down, and there was, ended up being three, three lots in there. And it was a nice little bottom for the creek there. It flooded, but there was enough property there, they could have put a nice house, well, the house that was there was at street level, and, uh... But now, it, it, it's just crazy. And then, and then they put a duplex on the other side of the road, and it, that's a bad intersection. Duplex with minimal parking, uh, it's crazy, you know? Had another guy that fixed up an old house, he wanted to, he took down a bunch of sheds and garages and stuff on Seventh Street, and, uh, he, uh, wanted to put a garage and have access on Seventh Street, and he was denied that, uh, access. They, uh, said you can access off the alley, which in the end turned out all right, but, uh... Parks of Seventh, nobody parks on either side of it, or they're off the road. If people parked on both sides of that Seventh Street, it would be a disaster. A block and a half from the high school, they, they parked there, and you gotta wait and jockey and ch-ch-ch, you know? I heard, uh, the, the words, you know, that they meet our standards, or the minimum standards for streets with traffic, whatever. Streets and whatever, they, they were laid out a long time ago, and they haven't changed with, uh, cars are bigger, trucks are bigger, traffic, more traffic, and, uh, you know, There's sidewalks down Eighth Avenue to, uh, Sixth Street, and then there's, going south, there's no sidewalks. When they redid Eight, two years ago, they put in, uh, curb and gutter and, uh, no sidewalks for, you know, further down. So, uh, yeah, and somebody mentioned Eleventh Street and the ball, ball games and whatever at the deal down there. That's just insane, you know? Avoided at all costs. But anyway, I'm very fortunate to have been able to work in Glacier Park and Forest Service. Not everybody has that opportunity, and, uh, I'm very thankful for that, and, uh... Not everybody has that opportunity and I'm very thankful for that and I used to tell everybody I go to the nicest office in in the world because all of Glacier Park was my office, you know, and I just see a lot of bad things that have gone on in the, you know, lower valley, you know, that used to be prime agricultural land, now it's just, you know, a bunch of houses, you know. You know, maybe we don't want more people here. I know Glacier, Glacier is regretting now for advertising and encouraging people to come and see Glacier to bring up their visitation so they can get more money and, you know, more people, but now you can't go, you can't decide to go to Glacier tomorrow because you gotta get a special day use permit along with all the other entrance fees and whatever, it's just and they had to do that because there was so much traffic that a lot of times you can't get into the parking lot, you, you all know that. Up at Logan Pass, you know, they just wave you on, park, sorry, parking lot is full, you know. And they're not gonna build a bigger parking lot. So they got a real problem up there and, but I see a lot of the same things developing here in the valley. But I just want to finish and say, say I really appreciate all your guys' time and putting up with me and everything else, but, yeah, you know. You're in a tough spot, man. God bless you, you know. Yeah, you know. But I've been watching a little bit of Yellowstone and Kevin Costner, when he was running for governor, he said, if you want progress, you don't want to vote for me because I'm on the other end of that, so. There you go, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's for you guys.
Good evening. I don't really have a dog in this hunt, my name is Todd Daigle. I live in Flathead County and I was asked by the residents here to have a conversation. I've got over forty years' experience in construction materials business, site development, aggregates, a little bit of everything, concrete pipe, concrete precast, et cetera. And sitting here listening tonight, I was gonna talk a little bit about the construction process. And make no mistake, this is a commercial building, this is not residential, it's gonna be commercial, it's all work. It is something that a developer is gonna come in, they're gonna make it happen fast, they're gonna make it quick. Your traffic is gonna be unbelievable, you're talking about vehicles coming in at eighty thousand pounds plus with aggregate concrete, you're talking about noise that's gonna be unbelievable. The residents are gonna be suffering from dust, noise, concrete pumps, backup alarms, tailgates banging in the mornings, in the evenings. It's gonna be a huge undertaking, it's nothing short of commercial business, I mean, it's what it's gonna be. I've done it, they're gonna come in here, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have trucks backed up, God knows how far. I've been on site and that site is gonna, is not that large. When you bring in trucks and you start paving, you start doing these things, it's gonna back up into the residents, it's gonna back up on the streets, you're gonna have to figure out a way to handle the dust with suppression from water, when that water goes down on the material, it's gonna be trapped right back out on the streets. It's a, it's a, it's a commercial project. And having been on both sides of zoning before, whether I was trying to have something zoned like a concrete plant, which people can't stand, or a agri quarry, which people can't stand, any of these things, it's, you're up against a fight, obviously. And I've been on the other side where residents have come in and tried to put in a subdivision next to a quarry, which makes zero sense. So we fight that. But at the end of the day, the developer comes in here, he's got an opportunity, and from what I've listened to tonight, the residents aren't necessarily against development, they're against a commercial development, which is exactly what this is. You're gonna change the entire landscape with two-story residences backed up against people's houses. As somebody stated that they're gonna be able to look right down into their homes and it's gonna be a project that's gonna be fast-paced, whereas if it was a residential project, you'd be able to come in there, it's a little slower, a little slower pace, you're not gonna have the traffic, additional traffic with all the construction vehicles. It's a, it's a nightmare waiting to happen. And the developer has the opportunity in the very beginning to come in and say, hey, if he wanted to be smart about it, he comes in, he says, I can come under the radar, I can do this residential, I can do this single family, we wouldn't all be sitting here tonight. We wouldn't be having this conversation, it wouldn't be an issue, because everybody's pretty much in agreement with that. But what you're wanting to do is throw something at them that is now becoming detrimental to the neighborhood. It is, I guarantee you, if the construction activity starts, you got problems, there's no two ways about it. Safety, ingress and egress, you've already got ingress and egress problems, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know very many landowners that landlocked themselves, and you're essentially landlocked at this point. You can't, if anything should happen and you gotta get out of there, the elevation difference between where these properties sit and coming down across the, was it Ashley Creek, I believe, you can't, you can't do it. You can't jump that bank, you can't get down that bank. I mean, it's actually, you've got no safety issues, you've got, I mean, no, nowhere to, you've got nowhere to go. I mean, you just don't, and it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen, I just I'm speaking on their behalf because I've seen it, I've been on both sides and I think it's, I think the answer is pretty simple. You, you redevelop it, you rezone it, or you replat it and you do it single family. And then, you know, this is about making money fast, that's what it amounts to. You come in, you make it happen, you do it quick, you throw the sticks up and going about your business. Otherwise, the problem is, you gotta do the plots, the plats, take your time, sell the houses one at a time, but you also reduce your traffic count, it's easier to get in and out. You know, regardless of all the stuff that they're giving you, the green space, the trails and all that, so what? You're still throwing ninety-nine units in something that's pretty much compact in a very small area and you're hurting the values of their homes and it's, it just, it doesn't make sense. I mean, if somebody really wanted to do this, why wouldn't you just come in immediately, make a single-family housing, be done with it and go about your business? Thanks for listening.
Thanks, sir.
Jeremy Peterson, twenty-one thirty-five North Wintercrest, formerly a resident of Santa Fe Street. You know, familiar with the area. You know, I know the street there is, can be congested and narrow, but there are other streets and I I would say from a safety standpoint, I mean, residents that have issues, there are other streets they can use to help alleviate that themselves. But as far as the project itself, you know, you heard me state at other meetings is, you know, more units we have available, hopefully, it'll push price down on these rents and help keep our young folks in town and honestly, it's a developer's risk of whether he can fill these apartments or not, or if he wants his perspective to work and, you know, meet his numbers, that's his risk, that's his prerogative and you know, but I think supply and demand will help drive some of these prices down, so somewhere young folks can stay in the area, that's all I got, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, my name is Neil Maven, I live at one oh five Santa Fe Street. I'm gonna address an issue that it seems like nobody has brought up and it's confusing to me. This neighborhood at its closest point is less than a quarter of a mile from wildland. So you are in the wildland urban interface. This neighborhood has very limited ingress and egress. There's close to a thousand homes in this neighborhood and you've only really got maybe three if you want to count all the, the roads out. This is a dangerous situation. You have a possibility of strong prevailing west winds coming off of Lone Pine. And if we have a really dry year, that alternate ninety-three is not going to stop anything. And you're gonna have a major fire coming right into the city. This is not just this neighborhood because you are expanding along Three Mile as well. You're encroaching on the wildland interface and it's dangerous. You have a bunch of people that live in this valley who are career professional wildfire, wildland firefighters and they're here as a resource. The DNRC, the Forest Service, you can talk to your local county folks, they'll all tell you this is a dangerous situation. I don't know why nobody is really considering any of this. I really don't want to see something like Kalispell being in the national news like what happened in Boulder with the Marshall Fire or with Lahaina in Hawaii or the campfire in California where an entire city was basically mowed down by wildfire. It's a distinct possibility and it's real. This is the situation that exists right now and you're wanting to put even more people in danger. It's disturbing to me. I would say pump the brakes, pause, figure out ingress and egress. You have, if you bring in wildland firefighters, they will try to help you with this. They will look at it and say, you know, we might be able to defend these homes if we had draft access to Ashley Creek. They can do that. Here's another situation that has happened with all of these fires that have been mentioned. People have tried to defend their homes with their hoses, garden hoses, and they can do it until one of the homes in there or two of them burn and then guess what you have, an open spigot. Water pressure drops, there's no water for anybody, including the firefighters. And then you have a situation where the whole thing just burns up. You can go and look at this stuff online, there's plenty of research, you could talk to the the career professionals that live in this and retired in this valley, there's a whole bunch of them. I could put you in touch with these people if you want. It's a situation that's very dangerous for the entire city. I think you guys just need to step back, take a look at the situation, fix and mitigate these issues before you proceed. I'm all for development, but again, it's gotta be smart, let's fix the issues that we have and I just don't want to see this community go up in smoke and make the national news in that way. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone online? They're going to go down South Meadows to, they're going to go down South Meadows to this site because Blue Stone can't handle it, there's no way those trucks are gonna make it through there during rush hour. That's a whole adjustment for every single kid in this neighborhood as well as all the animals in the neighborhood, like there's so many cats running around and we've already had one cat hit in front of my house because of speeders and, you know, just the traffic. There's, you know, several deer wandering around the neighborhood with limps because they've been hit by vehicles in the neighborhood. And we're gonna add big trucks and more construction, there's just, it's it's not the right place for this many apartments. If, you know, we are a single-family area, but Teal has duplexes and they're nice, you know. Most of the ones I can see from my view, they do a wonderful job, they're, you know, they have that ownership. Why not put in townhomes duplexes, I think most people would fully support that. But putting in this many people in that small a space is just ridiculous. It was mentioned that most of the houses in this neighborhood are for, you know, above four hundred thousand, that's not true. I just checked my house and it wasn't four hundred thousand, it was under that. So there's, I mean, there's, it's not, I'm not saying it's super affordable and everybody can do it, but if you work your butt off, you know, you can, and, you know, it was always my dream to do it too, and so as many other residents have told you, like, this is huge, this isn't the right place to have this many people. I've got a high schooler who, you know, he's a, he's a teenage boy, so he doesn't pay attention. He walks to the high school most of the time and I worry every single day that he's gonna get hit by a car. Whether it's because, you know, he's focused on his phone, even though, you know, as parents, we tell him not to or if it's because they're going too fast or they can't see and they hit him. It's a huge concern and we're gonna add construction and big trucks to that. When I've been in this valley, my, pretty much my whole life, my dad's from here as well and I remember as a kid, we would always drive by this area and he always would shake his head and say, I can't believe the city was dumb enough to put houses there, it floods, it's been a swamp my whole life. It's been a swamp, I, I remember when Rimrock, that house, the entire backyard went into the creek. I, you know, that was so devastating for those people, like, that's, that was their whole, like, space, it was just gone and in the creek bed. But that was normal, that's what Ashley Creek always does, no matter where it's at, it's so unstable. It's, it shouldn't have that many people's lives on it, it's just, that's so much traffic. We already have a hard time with traffic, that that's just adding so much more. But I agree with everybody else what they've said, but just wanted to throw out from the other side, you know, we're pretty concerned about it as well and all of the safety concerns because the kids, you know, choose South Meadows instead of Blue Stone because of the traffic and we're taking away that second option for them and that's not fair, so I hope you say no and thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara? Barbara, did you want to provide public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. This is Barbara Bradford, Sunshine, Thirty-Eight Trail, Ham Drive, Kalispell. My family and my friends live in that area is why I'm coming on it. I'm going to bring up several things that have not been brought up, I believe. You will get a certain amount of tax money from a ninety-nine apartment, but it's not going to be the A part bit, but it's not going to be the same money that you're going to get from the people who are already there. You have the dream that, oh, you have access to, uh, the bypass? You haven't been there when I have. You add more people, there's gonna be a fifty-car line of people waiting to get onto the bypass from Airport Road. Um, I repeat everything that everyone else said. Uh, the soil is unstable. I'm quite sure the soil purpose for it. The school capacity is the old, there's surplus of this type of housing. Uh, you know, it's adjacent to properties that have decent values and your values of the property and the adjacent property owners are gonna tank because of it. This gentleman just brought up the fire ranger. And I have no idea who thinks that the roads are wide enough. Because it's two people, it's two sides of the roads are parked on in that area. Only one car is gonna get through. I sometimes think that it's really great to do studies and not be in the neighborhood to see what is actual reality. I believe that studies have a place, but I think there has to be in-person evaluation of what's going on. And I, I truly beg you to not add ninety-nine unneeded apartments to this area in, in danger of my granddaughter. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Anybody else in line? Okay. Anybody else in the room want to give? Okay. Close the public comment, we're gonna move on. First item would be Resolution sixty-two ninety-one. This would be the annexation question.
I'd just like to make a point of order, Your Honor. In the past, I've been asked to recuse myself for engaging in ex parte communication, particularly in the Junegrass project where I mistakenly communicated with the project applicant prior to the vote. I've also been warned sternly by members of this council in another debate that if I did engage in ex parte communication, I'd be in big trouble. Even though there was no evidence that I had engaged in ex parte communication. We have had a member of the council who has admitted to engaging in ex parte communication on this project. And so I would ask that he recuses himself. Mr. Dowd.
Okay, it's up to Mr. Dowd to disclose the last meeting. What's your?
Well, let me read my statement that I had prepared. At last week's council work session, I disclosed for the public record that I met with members of the community around this proposed project. Even though it hurts my heart to not be able to meet with any member of the community for any reason at any time, as I believe that is my primary purpose on council. I do understand that a non-public meeting concerning a project that is currently in process and on the agenda is against council policy. Therefore, I recuse myself from any discussion to include the votes on this agenda item. H five. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd? Okay, so we're at Resolution sixty-two ninety-one. This is annexation. Do we have motion? Don't all jump. Can't talk till we get motion on the table. Mr. Graham?
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I move Resolution number six-two-nine-one, a resolution to provide for the alteration of the boundaries of the city of Kalispell by including therein as an annexation certain uh, real property described as attractive land in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section nineteen, township twenty-nine north, range twenty-one west, PMM, Flathead County, Montana, as more particularly described on exhibit A to be known as North Meadows Edition Number four eighty-two to zone said property in accordance with the Kalispell zoning ordinance and to declare an effective date. Second.
Who is the second? Mr. Hunter? Excuse me. Too many cigarettes during this meeting. Okay, motion second. Do we have discussion on the zoning?
Yeah, one of the questions that I've, I've always really kind of wondered about uh, when it comes to doing a, an annexation comes in with the zoning. When an applicant is asking for annexation, it ultimately leads to the end result of, in this case, uh, either a preliminary plat or a conditional use permit or whatever. Is it responsible to give annexation? If, if you aren't going for the end result?
So, I guess, at this point, it's annexation. You're not on the zoning.
Sure.
So, um.
Cause I can, I can see one, let's just say hypothetically, somebody goes through and sees the benefit of one and don't know where they're at on the other one, but it, it's the dominoes, you know, you push the dominoes down.
So it is a two-part process. You got first reading, second reading. It's thirty days before it's effective. Certainly if the applicant, once the council initiates a process, it started, but if say, um, an applicant didn't like a decision the council made on the initial zoning that say they hadn't requested. They, they could also request a deannex. They could request that, hey, now that I didn't get the zoning, I don't want to be annexed.
Okay, that's, that answered my question. Yeah, the deannexation part of it. Okay.
Just more discussion?
A question, I guess, to follow up on that, on the, kind of looking down the road here. With the recent state legislative changes on multifamily, it didn't require conditional use permits in commercial zones is, so if we zone it as RA one, is the conditional use permit still?
So that's a law that's effective now, but under three D two, once it's fully implemented, there won't be any conditional use permits at all.
So it, it currently, we can require the conditional use permit, but three eighty-two.
In this, in this particular one, because it wouldn't be a commercial zone. It would be RA one, RA two would still provide for conditional use permit, but under state law in the future, it would not.
Yeah, but currently, we're still okay with conditional use permit. Thank you.
It's not until January one, twenty twenty-six, that the citizen's voice gets stripped of by, by the legislature.
That's what I was just gonna clarify, that if we did not, if this did not pass today, the developer could wait out a few months and do this without potential. Okay.
So other discussion?
I, I guess the way I see it is, I mean, this is infill as far as, you know, the annexation is concerned. I mean, it makes sense to annex it into the city.
I mean, really, you look at the domino effect and you look, we, we have annexation. Okay, great. We'll deliver services. We haven't said anything about the parameters of what we would set under our policy for zoning. Now you can look to the zoning and the request is RA one. You know, part of our discussion on the zoning question can be what's compatible with the neighborhood that's there. Is RA one compatible or is it R four? What is compatible? Under our four conditional use permit, under three eighty-two.
Multifamily isn't a permitted use within the R four zone.
It's not.
It's not. Single family duplex, density is relatively the same. It's the configuration of the housing. I don't suspect that will change under three D two. Obviously, there's a lot of zoning updates and things that'll take place, but um, there certainly is some state laws that have affected R four zoning as well as far as parking and ADUs and things like that. But the configuration of multifamily wouldn't be allowed in, even in the future in that case.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor, but all it would take is extension after extension, like we see on many other projects to take us out of the loop of that is what I'm hearing. It, it could be multiple extensions of the project to take us to new laws where we have limited control.
That's the way Montana's moving.
Exactly.
So it matters who you vote for and send to the state legislature.
Okay, thank you.
But the question before us right now is annexation.
I understand.
Why I ask, when I ask questions, what is our policy? These, you know, really, this checks the box, you know, and a lot of what we look at is check the box. There's also a lot of things that we have to look at with compatibility, policy, et cetera, that we do have discretion. Annexation, eh, kind of checks the boxes. Other discussion on the annexation?
I just wish we could do it in different order.
This is the order that we have.
I know, I know.
It's predictable.
You can't get the one without the other.
Correct. I know.
Any other discussion? Ever roll call vote on the motion to approve Resolution sixty-two ninety-one, the annexation?
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Next would be ordinance nineteen forty-five. This is the zoning.
I move ordinance number one nine four five, an ordinance to amend section twenty-seven point zero two point zero one zero, official zoning map, city of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number one six seven seven, by zoning certain real property described as attractive land in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section nineteen, township twenty-eight north, range twenty-one west, PMM, Flathead County, Montana, previously zoned. County R one suburban residential to city RA one residential apartment in accordance with the Kalispell growth policy plan at twenty thirty-five and to provide an effective date.
Motion, we have a second. Have a second.
Oh, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, you have a second? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
I guess I'll, I was gonna save a lot of my discussion for the conditional use permit, uh, portion of it. But because three eighty-two kind of ties them together in that we approved one, we're kind of stuck with the other potentially in the, in the future, near future. So I'm gonna talk for a little while. I've got a lot to say. Um, first, I want to start by, by saying that, you know, when it comes to just the multifamily, uh, that's not the issue for me. And, you know, we had a talk about all the growth we're having, you know, gotta have enough growth. We hear that all the time here at council. Development does not bring growth. Nobody looks at Kalispell and, and checks to see if South Meadows got approved before deciding to move here. They move here because of job, recreation opportunities, family, good retirement community. And then they see what's available and if there's not much available, they bid up the price and that's why we have high housing prices. Denying development approvals, don't pre, don't stop the growth. We're the fastest growing metropolitan area in the country regardless. We may, we talked about, you know, all the housing we have approved. And that may be true, um, coming out, we've approved a lot of units. And, uh, it may be that that starts affecting price, but ultimately the determinant of that is the price and ultimately that would affect the developer. A developer's not gonna come forward and build uh, something at a loss if prices are dropping and because there's over supply, right? So there's an assessment of the market, there's still demand. We still get development proposals coming in, prices are still remaining high. And even if there is a bit of oversupply, which I hope there is because we need prices to come down, we need five hundred units a year just to keep pace with growth. So within a few years, if you don't have that development, you're, you're gonna be behind the ball again, you know, quickly. So, um, and then I heard something about property values and being multifamily. I hope that doesn't motivate people on this. Um, there's, it's been researched about, there's, there's nothing inherent about multifamily that brings down property values. Our research doesn't support that. That said, uh, I do have concerns with the proposal. One of which, and, and again, a lot of it ties to this specific proposal on their conditional use permit, but one of a kind of multifamily issue is the fact we don't have sidewalks on Blue Stone. And that's a safety issue. And we've confronted that in other developments before. And I've approved some of the, you know, uh, Two Mile is an example where we had that concern. And I, and I voted approve on that. Tronstat, we did not. I voted against that one. But a lot of times, the condition on that was, we didn't have sidewalks, but it was county property. So we couldn't do anything about it. In this case, it's city property. We can do something about. And I've pushed and proposed doing something about missing sidewalks in our community. Putting a levy before the voters to fund, uh, infill of sidewalks. But we've chosen not to do that at this council. I have a hard time approving a project that's gonna put a lot of traffic on a road without sidewalks when we're not willing to uh, use the political capital to push for sidewalks to make our streets safe, safer, uh, like in this neighborhood on Blue Stone. So I have a problem with that, that conflict. On the riparian buffer, uh, issue, so I, I was pretty sure I was right on this, but I pulled up the mapping system and checked again. What was pointed out on this map is not the two hundred foot buffer. That's the geotech line. The two hundred foot buffer, if you applied it, not only would you lose that western building, but you would lose the northeast building, at least one of them, if not both of them, within that two hundred foot buffer. As I said, two hundred foot buffer, the reason why buffers on rivers are important wildlife travel corridor, we know that wildlife diversity and abundance is richest, uh, near water, particularly in riparian corridors. It provides a filtration's, uh, system for any kind of pollutants and other reasons, uh, bank stability and so on. None of that changes just because there's no subdivision. Uh, and I have in the past voted against projects that don't respect the two hundred foot buffer uh, under our subdivision code and I, I will again tonight. I'm, I, and I always will. I'm consistent about that. But what's particularly egregious to me on this is we've talked about our wastewater treatment facility. And the difficult we've had in meeting water quality standards because Ashley Creek has such low flow and because we have pollutants upstream and we've talked about how we can't control the pollutants happening upstream that come in and then we have to add our effluent and try to meet the water quality standards. Well, here's a property upstream of our wastewater treatment facility and we actually have gone so far as to try to reclassify Ashley Creek to allow for lower standards for our wastewater treatment facility. And here we have a development. for our wastewater treatment facility, and here we have a development, um, and we're not gonna apply the full two hundred foot buffer to it that could help filtrate fertilizers and herbicides being used on the landscaping of the development. And so that doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, if we respected the two hundred foot buffer, if we committed to, uh, addressing sidewalks uh, in our community for safety, I'd look at this differently. But those two issues in particular, and I would like to see, uh, you know, public trail system. I, if we get to the conditional use permit, I would condition it on, uh, public access to the trail system. And I'll provide findings for that at that time, but, uh, that's where I'm at. So I won't be supporting it, uh, because of the three eighty-two forcing our hand on connecting the two.
So you're good with the zoning?
I would be good with the zoning if, uh, again, the three eighty-two connection, forcing our hand with the conditional use permit, where basically the conditional use permit goes away in a few months. So I'm, I'm, I'm not in this case. And, and because of, of the safety issue with the sidewalks and the, and the traffic on Blue Stone.
So let me ask you this then, with the three eighty-two aspect of it kicking in in a few months, with the way I explained at the planning board, this is the, this is what you've got in front of you right now. You know what you've got. You don't know what you're gonna have after three eighty-two. That, nobody does, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know who the developer is, I don't know what, maybe it would be the same thing. But after three eighty-two, after the first of the year, things change.
Well, we still get to zone it. It doesn't affect our zoning power. That's, that's the issue, right? That's why we're getting to the zoning here.
Right, exactly, so that's why I was kinda was, was asking with where you're at on the zoning for it. Because that comes to the extent of the question of compatibility with the neighborhood, I guess, you know, from, I, I heard what you were saying about that. You're okay with, you know, the design of it and everything, other than how it affected the, the two hundred foot buffer.
And the safety on Blue Stone.
So then maybe you're not okay with the zoning, the proposed one.
The issue with the zoning is not the, not the fact that it's multifamily. There may be the fact of the number of units on this design.
More discussion?
Thank you, your honor. I've grown up in this neighborhood, or in this community, I, I've seen a lot. Neil, I'm sorry if, didn't catch your last name, but you're, you're spot on, right? We, we all live within the urban interface, no matter really where we are in Kalispell. Cause when sparks start flying, it's gonna hit. And I've driven through this neighborhood many, many times and, and listening to, to Neil's comments tonight, it really did highlight, cause you look at what's right behind that with the sh, the shrubs going down along there. How it wouldn't take longer to rip right through there and into that neighborhood. And only having one way in and one way out with ninety-nine units, that draws concerns from a safety standpoint to me. I've been here long enough that I saw a fire like that that could have potentially done it. Many of you lived around here in the mid-eighties, you remember F Hill Fire? When F Hill caught on fire and it was threatening quite a bit, and thank goodness the firefighters were able to get it stopped where they did, and, you know, we could almost lost the, uh, Bibbler home up there, right? I mean, it was, it was close. But I also grew up on Ashley Creek, and I know how Ashley Creek can change and move. And I, I get what you're saying, Ryan, with, with the two hundred feet. But when you stop and think of the creek moving the way it could, you could get your two hundred feet back, you could lose your two hundred feet real quick. And I know we can't control that. But I also remember that neighborhood when it was first built, in those first few years, those poor folks, all their houses were flooding. And with the commercial development, what you do get out of that is they've gotta provide that structure, that base, whatever type of peers, whatever that's gonna be. But if we say it's not residential, or if we say we don't want the commercial, we want residential, well, residential does not require any of that. I would have a hard time saying that we should put houses there. So I'm, I'm at a conundrum on this. I, I too agree, driving through that neighborhood, I I never had a problem driving through that neighborhood, I will say that right now. But I could see how adding ninety-nine units could certainly potentially have an impact. Especially one way in, one way out, coming out of the development itself. So I'm, I'm really struggling if I can even support the next two votes.
Thank you, your honor, very well said, Sam, you put it in fantastic words for everything I'm feeling. Just too many traffic concerns, the fire concerns, safety concerns are enormous for me. Struggling with that. Um, soils concerns, I, I know the area, I've worked here for thirty-five years, ran the mosquito district. I know that area, I know the work I used to do down there, um, wet oftentimes. Uh, the, much of the area, the outlaw inn was a mess as well, even closer up, let alone further down south. Too many risks for pedestrians for me, children, um, the bicycle traffic that we hear about already, the children walking. The route to stool, um, is not safe for me. The groundwater concerns, flooding concerns, fire concerns, I, I'm just struggling, I, I, I believe, I, I can't get there, I'm gonna be a no.
Other discussion? Couple points, as I look at this, there's a couple things, I mean, we, we've got the specter of three eighty-two. Inspector is, you know, what under, what, the unfortunate part is we've got this room full of people that don't understand what the legislature is potentially, well, has done to them. We're sitting here trying to make decisions, we're wrestling with what can we do? We have an applicant that came forward, wants to move RA one residential apartment. The rest of this neighborhood is R four, it was county R one. When we look back at what we did at Greenbrier, and I remember Greenbrier well because it was a no vote on Greenbrier, but there's a difference in Greenbrier, Two Mile is a major road. When we were looking at putting apartments on Two Mile, that exited onto a major collector. Arterials. What we're looking at here is a subdivision with residential streets with a proposal to add on to the top of it. A new zone of RA one with conditional use permit, high density. And what I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with that high density for all these various reasons. One, we don't have easy ingress and egress without putting a major load on, because traffic studies are traffic studies, but it really where the rubber hits the road is the impact day to day on the people in the neighborhood. And I've seen that where I lived on Northland Drive. The only other thing is, when I look at the zoning, I don't think we have compatibility. We don't have neighborhood compatibility with a proposal. And I am, as everybody well knows, I am doctor yes when it comes to subdivisions in Kalispell. I have long said, the best thing we can do is let market forces prevail to fix the pricing, the pricing issues. But it has to be smart, it has to be well thought out. What I would propose is we take anywhere where we see city RA one residential apartment and substitute it for city R four as an amendment and substitute that language throughout ordinance nineteen forty-five. What that does is it sets up residential zoning on this parcel. The annexation holds, here's the zoning. The owner can look at it and say, do they wanna move ahead with that, yea or nay? They have avenues to get back out, say I don't wanna annex. What that does is it also gives us the ability not to move forward RA one, vote down a conditional use permit, go three months and have citizens and have a neighborhood negatively impacted where they have no voice. That's my biggest issue. It's the biggest issue I have with the legislature, it's the biggest issue I have with the Frontier Institute, the governor, etc., you've all heard me say it. They don't care about the people who made up this community who can wanna come and give an expression. We had public comment through the planning board process, had two meetings. We've heard public comment now, I've looked at this, I think, I look at the findings, I think there's an avenue where we adjust to R four. We've given zoning. At that point, I don't think the CUP even moves forward.
Yeah, at that point, you would vote down the CUP for not, not compatible with the zone.
With the zone.
Cause R four doesn't allow for multifamily, and then like you said, the, the, uh, the applicant could we'll have to talk with the applicant and decide whether they potentially even wanna move forward with second reading or because to become effective, you have to do first reading, second reading, so potentially if they didn't even wanna move forward, they could write a letter and request, just pulling out, um, or they could reevaluate R four zone and come forward with a, a proposal in R four, which would require a subdivision and, um, it would be a single family duplexum, which is similar to what's around there.
And the two hundred foot buffer would play.
Say, and that would give you your subdivision regulations with your two hundred foot setback, Mr. Hunter, which
Well, there are reasons that you have a multifamily development for you. It's very hard to meet that setback and to do a typical lot and block development, so I can pretty much guarantee you, any subdivision application will have a variance request for that setback. You will not be able to develop that without encroaching on that setback, which then the city's at risk of it taking. That's just the reality.
But compatibility with the neighborhood prior things approved, an exception there is consistent.
But with the, just, if I may, on the variance, you talk about the variance, that's for the access, right? So the variance may just be that street coming in, and then it would respect the buffer everywhere else.
Potentially, I don't wanna speculate, but likely, yes, it's similar to how you, cause you're gonna have to get access in for a fire truck, which is gonna require a city street, which has a city street right of way that you're, with the ter, turning movements and such, it's gonna be difficult to get that in there without encroaching on, on that setback. But yes, looking at a majority of the site, there is also single access and a residential getting into the details, but a thousand foot maximum, so you can't automatically take it full advantage of the site with that either, but it'll be, it would have to be an option that they would have to weigh.
So potential, just one more, it's not, let's say we go back, tell them R four, and they come back with a residential unit. Those setbacks could also shrink down quite a bit and move those, those properties closer to the houses.
They, they could, but then you may also end up with thirty-five foot two-story houses lined up all the way down that you heard a lot of comment about looking into backyards and stuff. You're gonna get that with a single family home as well, so.
Which is what we discussed at Greenbrier.
Exactly.
I'm sorry you didn't hear that.
That's what we discussed on the Greenbrier on Two Mile. So as I look at it and, you know, that is what, as I'm watching, as I'm looking at this, studied, I've gone through multiple times, listening to concerns from council, that's an amendment that would basically answer or address so many of the concerns. Doesn't meet the applicant's request, but it really could meet what we're looking at and address the concerns that we have.
Move to amend zoning from RA one to R four.
Second.
Throughout all instances in nineteen forty-five. So I have motion second on amending that. You've, you've recused yourself.
I know, this has nothing to do with the, with anything, uh, we've been calling this nineteen forty-five this entire time, it's nineteen forty-three.
Sorry.
I just wanna make sure that everybody understands which one we're talking about, cause nineteen forty-five's coming up.
This is the zone change.
It is nineteen forty-five.
It's nineteen forty-five. It's also a good move. So we have motion to amend in a second, any other discussion on that? Have a roll call on the amendment.
Counselor Nunnely?
No.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Back to ordinance nineteen forty-five is amended now with our four language for zoning, for the discussion on that. Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Nunnely?
No.
Counselor Carlson?
No.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
I'm confused.
As amended.
On nineteen forty-five, as amended, with the, um, R four zoning.
So we're voting for R four?
Correct, we did that with the amendment, so we put R four language in it, now you're voting on the ordinance with the R four language in.
Ow, I messed up.
You wanna?
Should we start over?
Yes, please.
Let's start over.
Recast the votes.
So ordinance nineteen forty-five as amended. Counselor Nunnely?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
I'm so confused.
Aye, motion carries. Next item then, oh, getting down conditional use permits.
So now we don't do?
We don't even have to do that.
No.
Yeah, we had, it's incompatible with the zoning.
So we have conditional use in front of us, look to council for a motion. To approve or deny, correct, to deny.
So.
It would be a motion to deny the conditional use permit because interline zoning wasn't.
I'll read it, I just, my phone's dead.
Yeah, there's nothing to read, I don't think it's on there. Uh, I move to deny the conditional use permit because it's not compatible with the zone.
Second.
Second.
Motion two seconds. Discussion on the motion? I'll go with Mr. Fisher.
He was first.
Any discussion on the motion? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Nunnely?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries for the denial. Next item, resolution sixty-two ninety-two, why everyone's here, the reimbursement for lead service line replacement. Resolution of preliminary expenditures for this project from a state revolving tax exempt bond. When those funds become available, presentation.
As you said, I'll make it quick, resolution sixty-two ninety-two, the council passed a similar resolution a couple weeks ago in regards to the biosolids, uh, dewatering project. What this does is just allow for some initial project cost, um, to be incurred here, um, and then be rolled into an SRF bond in the future, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Public comment, take a number, step up. Mr. Dowd, you're back in action.
Back in action, your honor, I move resolution number six.
Whatever.
Get it up here. Six nine, uh, uh, sorry, six-two-nine-two, resolution related to financing of certain proposed projects establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code in advance of the proposed issuance of revenue bonds by the City of Kalispell Water System, DNRC Drinking Water Revolving Loan Program to provide funds to pay for the cost of water systems pros, projects.
Second, that's a safe second, okay, second. Discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Nunnely?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Mister Nygren, City of Andrews. Better be used to saying.
Yeah, it's getting late. I'll keep it quick. Do have a work session next week on ambulance billing, uh, looking at procuring a third party to help us with that. So wanna go over that and also the, uh, Northwest Montana History Museum property transfer. So had that discussion also a couple weeks ago. Um, continue that discussion. So that's all I got.
Anything from council? It's almost eleven o'clock, so keep it. Unless you want me to wake you up at four o'clock when I get up for my call.
I gotta get it for.
I just, I have to do this. Yesterday, we received a letter from the Flathead Builders Association. Uh, listing some grievances with the city and asking for a work session. I wanna provide some context to that letter. Uh, back in February, I met with a representative of the Flathead Builders Association, Kisa Davison. Um, she raised some of those grievances with me. I made a recommendation to her that they put in writing their grievances. And request a, a work session. Three months later, she announced her candidacy for mayor. Six months later, we received this letter just as the campaigning season is getting underway. I can't ignore the timing of that. I think, uh, it seems blatantly an effort to. Uh, manipulate the.
Full not to use public time to campaign.
Well, I just, but I, I, I feel that the letter to the council is going to be used, uh, you know. For election purposes, and that's what bothers me about it. I'm happy to have a work session to discuss those issues. But I think it should wait until after the election, possibly after the new year with a new council.
Can you jump on this?
Go ahead.
On this exact issue, have I asked for, where we have had exactly zero.
Many.
Happy to do it. Actually just want them at the table this time if we do it. Happy if it's after election. More than happy to participate, even after I'm done being mayor on this issue. Because I have asked multiple times and can never get them at the table. So.
And more specificity in the concerns. They were bold points, not very specific, and I did ask for, when in, in February, a write-up of specifics. Um, yeah, and I'm happy to do it, uh, but I don't wanna do it as some sort of election campaign.
I would concur.
Election season's heating up. This is awesome.
The fact I'm not running, that's even better.
It's even better.
Anything else? Coming across, coming across. I could go on a long diatribe about the legislature, but I touched on it tonight, more in two weeks.